This is August 19th, 2014, regular session number 33, the Raytown Board of Aldermen. Raytown being the home of the Kansas City Royals who are in first place. I'm going to lead off tonight with Larry Cleveland giving us the invocation and pledge of allegiance, please.
Would you bow with me? Almighty God, Creator God, we come together this evening giving thanks for the abundant blessings you continue to pour out upon us, thanking you for our freedoms and our citizenship in this beautiful community, thanking you for the relationships that we treasure with family, friends, and neighbors. We come together in supplication, asking your blessing of wisdom and your guidance upon the government of this city and its elected officials, asking that they might discuss the agenda before them this evening in civility and mutual respect, that the good of the citizens might be foremost in their hearts and minds as they discuss and deliberate on the issues before them. May you continue to truly bless this assembly and this community. All these things we humbly and sincerely pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ask our city attorney to call the role, please. Alderman Kramer?
Here.
Alderman Josh Green?
Here.
Alderman Asia?
Here.
Alderman Jason Green?
Here.
Alderman Emerson?
Alderman Melson?
Here.
Alderman Ertz?
Here.
Alderman Van Buskirk?
Here.
Alderman Mock?
Here.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Here.
Try it again, Bill.
Now? Okay.
They are now for some reason. Good, good. All right, we have a quorum. I don't have a sign up sheet. If you are here to talk about one of the public hearings that we have, which are items six, seven, and
Ten.
Ten, we'd ask that you wait until those times when those items are called, and at that time we will call you forward. That way we are for sure to have you on the record. So at this time, though, we'll receive anybody, thanks Andy, we'll receive anybody that wants to talk and public comment, and Ms. Wishy has signed up first. I'm thinking, Julie, you want to wait till the, or you want to wait until that one public hearing, right? And Dave, same thing? Okay, all right. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the Board of Aldermen on any one of the other topics other than the public hearing at this time? Okay, we'll move on past public comments. In the category of communication from the mayor, I attended a Total Transportation Planning Commission meeting today at Mid-America Regional Council, and want to let those viewing audience and those present know that they are sponsoring an older driver and pedestrian workshop and road safety audit. For all of us who may have people in that category or know someone in that category, participants will better understand the changes that occur with aging, identity modifications, identify modifications to the roadway system that create a better roadway for older drivers and all drivers and highlight best practices as part of this training. It's Thursday, September 4th, 8 to 5, and Friday, September 5th, 8 to 11, 30. And I'll leave this on the city administrator's desk for, or excuse me, the city administrative assistance desk, should you call and want more information on that. May I ask anything to add from the city administrator?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Just a couple of items tonight. This is back-to-back meeting. We had last meeting on August 12th, and meeting tonight is our regular meeting. We have to shift it due to the primary election on August 5th. There will be a blood drive on September 9th from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. If you would like to donate your blood, you can call for an appointment, or you can walk in. The number is 737-6030. From time to time, I also read some of the compliment that we receive. Tonight, it was addressed to our Parks Director, Kevin Boji, from a parent. "Thank you for addressing my concerns regarding my daughter. You showed the highest level of professionalism, service, and grace that I have ever encountered in a public official. You showed me that you are a good listener and that you displayed the values that your department and the city of Raytown stand for. I appreciate your diligence and your generous gentleness in this matter. Thank you." With that, I will conclude my report tonight.
I'm going to jump back in on one more thing that I just, I think, has to be said. As we watch the news from across the state, I know it's on everybody's mind, you know, being thankful that we're not Ferguson, but I think that we need to be, we need to keep them in our prayers and our thoughts as we go about our daily lives in the city of Raytown. We're blessed to have a, an excellent group of police officers on our streets that keep us safe. The entire metropolitan area is thinking about what's happening, and we're wanting to learn from what has happened as well. But the citizens of Raytown need to, need to know that they are safe, and that we will continue to do the best we can to keep them safe, our streets safe, and to be mindful of people's rights and concerns. And let's keep our thoughts with those in Ferguson that need our prayers at this time. Thank you. Go to committee reports, and I'll start on my right this time. Mr. Green, anything to report?
Another report this time.
Mr. Kramer?
Nothing from Fireboard this time.
Mr. Asia?
Melson.
Ms. Melson?
First, I want to apologize for my voice. Second, I've got two things to tell you. First one is, I want to remind everybody about the senior celebration, which is going to be Saturday, September 13th, at the Grace Way Point on Blue Ridge Cut Off. It is going to be an excellent time. It's $10, and you get food, you get dancing, you get raffle prizes. It's for anybody over 55. You can get tickets at Hy-Vee or at the Chamber, and they're going to go fast, so you need to get them now. But it's going to be a great evening and a wonderful event, so I hope that everybody can come out and support that. Another thing that I wanted to get through is, I passed out these United Way 211 cards. And what that is, a lot of times we get calls, and it's like, "Oh, I need this," or "I need that," and you're going, "I don't have a clue." And I get those calls all the time, and kind of rack my brain from my resource collection and try to give the information, but a lot of times I've come up, I just don't know. This, if somebody calls you and you're like, "I just don't know what, how to help them," all they have to do is call the United Way Information Line, and that's 211. It's a huge database of support resource information, where they kind of take, "Oh, I need transportation in Eastern Jack by Buckner and my person's over 65," and they bring that all down to what's available in that area. So I just wanted to offer you all this information, because I know a lot of times as Aldermen we get questions, and we're just going, "I just don't know what to do." And so this is an information card that you can keep. I've got plenty of them if you want more to pass out, but all you have to do is call United Way 211, and that's it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Ertz?
Yes, the Police Pension Board will meet, I believe, September 3rd at 8:00 AM, and the Super Splash Committee that was appointed will reconvene next Monday evening at 6:30, and those will be posted, I'm sure, if not, if they have not been already. Thank you.
Van Buskirk?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Mr. Lightfoot?
No report this evening, Mayor.
Mr. Mock?
Yeah, Council on Aging will be meeting this Thursday, on the 21st, at 4:15 here at City Hall.
Okay, very good. No other committee reports, I'll go to the study session. We've got an economic development update tonight provided to us by Tom Cole, our Economic Development Administrator. Thanks, Tom.
Mayor, Board of Aldermen, thank you for the time this evening. Economic development reports of the past, we try to do them quarterly, three times a year, whatever, of the past have typically been more about projects. It's been probably a couple of years since we really talked about process, so I'm going to use this opportunity to really talk about the economic development process, how we appear to businesses and retailers kind of looking at Raytown, how we view ourselves, and then finally, I'll wrap up with, with an update on our downtown redevelopment project and kind of where we are on that. Of course, the, the purpose of our economic development efforts is to advance the economic growth development and redevelopment of Raytown, ultimately enhancing the quality of life for the entire community. And under that, we really have four primary objectives or goals, if you will, or duties, one being business expansion and retention. This is obviously, you know, identifying and responding to the needs of our existing business community, working with the folks that are already here, trying to help them grow, to stay here, to employ more people, and to just flourish for some time into the future, ultimately to serve as a catalyst between independent business and the city of Raytown. You know, a lot of, a lot of what city government does is regulate. The role of the economic development division of this city isn't to regulate, but rather to enable and to solve problems and help, help those business owners navigate through the often cumbersome machinations of city government, and that's not just our city government, that's any city government. The way in which a government works is very foreign to most folks in independent business. They do things oftentimes, you know, pretty, pretty free flow and as things come. We have a pretty strict process of how things kind of move through the government process. So ultimately, in regard to expansion and retention, our job is to try to remove the barriers between what they want to do and how to get there. Objective two is business attraction, and this tends to be, you know, the more sexy aspect of economic development, if you will. Everybody wants to know what new businesses are coming to town, and where they're going to be, and what are they going to do, and all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of the part that gets most of the attention, but it's certainly not the most important. I view our most important as keeping the folks here happy, growing, and expanding. So attracting new firms to Raytown, essentially, we're tasked with marketing Raytown to local and national real estate firms, developers, industry professionals, and economic development partners around the region. So ultimately, we're taking our message of why Raytown's a great place for their business outside of Raytown and trying to attract additional investment, additional interest. Thirdly, and this one gets, I don't want to say it gets lost, but it's by far the most, most fuzzy of what we do, and that's entrepreneurship. And really what we do in that regard is, we, we talk to folks every day within Raytown who have an idea for a small business, or have it, or their, their neighbor tells them they make a, a great cookie, and they want to start selling that cookie, or things along those lines. So what we've done is, we've, we've developed strategic partnerships with the Missouri Small Business and Technology Centers, with Mamtech, which is a, basically a technology firm through the state of Missouri that assists entrepreneurs if they have a technical project, or through Missouri Enterprise, or through some other, through some other regional partnerships we have, to help those entrepreneurs take their idea through a very thoughtful process of developing a business plan, a marketing plan, a finance plan, and ultimately how to operate that business to get, you know, their neighborhood's best cookie on the, on the shelves to wherever they're going to go. Objective four is to improve relations with our existing business community and the business community at large, and that's to identify critical messages, to identify and secure audiences and avenues of message dispersment. That is, we go out and we talk about the great things that we're doing here in Raytown, and a lot of this has come off of the plate of economic development and onto the plate of our, of our Public Information Officer, that now that she's been here for, I believe, a couple of years, and she's done a great job really helping us get that message out through social, social media and whatnot. But really want to foster a positive, upbeat, hopeful messages to, relative to Raytown's future. And one thing I'll talk about here in a little bit is, you know, as we view ourselves, we kind of know what's going on in Raytown, our citizens know what's going on in Raytown, but the real estate community, the rest of this metro, which we're certainly a part of, they have no clue what, what, what's going on here. And that's really what we're trying to bolster right now, is to get our message out, to talk to as many real estate brokers, bankers, developers, mortgage folks, whatever, and let them know that we've got some cool things going on right now. It's, it's no secret that retail has been kind of at the top end of what we've been pursuing over the past few years, and our strategy with that is absolutely key. And over the past four and a half, almost five years, we've done what I believe is a fairly significant job of spurring new developments here in Raytown, including several larger redevelopment projects. So there are some challenges that come with that as well, with dispersing and sharing our message around, and, and those, those challenges are, we're landlocked. You can look at a map and you can find the definitive boundaries of where Raytown starts, where it stops, and we don't have, we've got a mere, you know, 10 square miles to play with here. And almost every one of our projects, if not every one of our projects, are redevelopment-oriented. So it takes a very special developer who's willing to not just go for a greenfield site, you know, five minutes from here in Lee's Summit, but takes the time to thoughtfully see and craft a development plan that redoes, or regenerates, or redevelops something that's already in existence in Raytown. We have an aging population, not necessarily a bad thing, but it doesn't make the forever 21s of the world beat a path to our door. So an aging population is another thing that's a little bit of a challenge to us, and again, it's not, not a bad thing, just from the eyes of those developers is, is, you know, what's, what's right for the marketplace. And finally, the, the last challenge I'll mention is that we are just five minutes from Lee's Summit. They do have a lot of green space of, you know, open ground, as well as a whole, their population's three times our size. So as far as a retailer who wants to capture business, capture consumers, it's a little more target-rich, just five minutes to our east. So again, we come back, you know, they could be anywhere in the world, why would they select Raytown? And, you know, our community, despite, you know, being how old we are as a community, not age-wise, we still have a myriad of retail needs, and perhaps more, more importantly to the retailers, they want to prop it. They want to make money, and we have citizens who can connect them to the dollars that they crave, that they crave. So ultimately, money drives retail. Retail sales taxes move communities. Those sales taxes that are generated keep your streets plowed, they keep your roads widened, keep the overlays coming, as well as a myriad of other, of other city services. So our goal really is to show retailers and developers and real estate professionals in general, how they can be successful in our community, and we can't assume that they know anything about our community. Frankly, some of the, some of the folks that I've talked to within our own metro know less about Raytown than folks that I've built relationships with over the past few years of national, of national development companies that are nowhere near here. So again, it's very important for us to get our message out locally. What our role as the Division of Economic Development, what our, what our role is, is to simply package and market Raytown and make it palatable to those, to those entities that can bring us deals, if you will. And that is to paint a realistic portrait of our community. You know, in, in economic development circles and Chamber of Commerce circles, every single community claims that we're the best place to live, work, and play. So they, they hear the same thing from everybody. My goal is to paint a realistic portrait of what Raytown is, of who we are, of what we have available, rather than to waste their time and waste our time. Identify real and desired targets of who we want to move into town, what types of businesses, what types of employers and whatnot. Provide real demographics, which I'll talk about here in just a second. And they want to know median household income, they want to know, they want to identify sites, which we have an in-house database of every available commercial property in Raytown that's on my computer, and that's really what we receive, perhaps more than anything, are inquiries about properties. And what it allows that entrepreneur, that, or that business to receive from us is an absolutely unbiased look at available properties in Raytown. We don't get a commission off the properties, we're not a real estate company, we simply provide the information. So we could frankly care less if real estate company A, B, C, or D owns that property, we just want the right fit to that company so that they do ultimately come to Raytown. So we identify those properties or assist them in identifying those properties, and we also provide one, three, and five mile incomes and populations and demographics surrounding each of those properties. And those ring studies are absolutely crucial, especially in the retail community, to identify where their customers are going to come from and what their success rate will likely be from those, from those populations. Traffic counts. We know that 350 Highway, like it or not, is our economic engine. That's where the bulk of the traffic in this town comes from. Every day, 35,000 cars hit 350 Highway. Conversely, at the intersection of closest, the closest main intersection to our downtown area is Raytown Trafficway and 63rd Street. Basically, we have roughly 14,000 cars that hit that intersection every day. So those are really the two epicenters, if you will, of where our economic engine comes from. Again, we provide real sites and real incentives, and I'll talk about the incentives here in a bit. My picture there of a unicorn with a slash through it is, I want to chase real projects, I don't want to chase, if somebody comes and says they're interested in building a million-gallon Shark Tank in Raytown, it's, it's probably not going to happen, and I'm not going to spend a whole lot of energy on that. So our internal audience, the folks here in Raytown, the business owners we've got, when asking them, and I do this every year, in fact, I give a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce here in another week or so, and I always start off by saying, "What are your impressions as business owners of Raytown?" And they always come back, "We've got a great climate, we've got decent incomes, we've got a solid inventory of spaces, we've got excellent schools, excellent public safety, the business owners love each other, and it's a pretty good family environment for everybody to kind of, to kind of exist in." And when we take that message out, you know, you can't really see because of the glare there, but how things appear to us don't always appear the same way to folks who don't know us, or folks that aren't that exposed to Raytown. So what they limit their basis on, or what they bias themselves on, are basically what I have there on the screen, and that's a number of different demographics, or a series of different demographics. The one I really want to focus on for the sake of the rest of this presentation is that household income number. And I've got it sort of compared to Lee's Summit and Liberty there as well, those are just two communities I grabbed just for the sake, comparison's sake. But our household income in Raytown, and this is city limit-driven, this is off the most recent census, is roughly $49,000. So that number is absolutely critical, especially in retail circles, of, of where they're going to go. Now, this is an example. Oftentimes, I'll, I'll get questions about, you know, "Can we get a steakhouse here? We used to have a steakhouse in Raytown, can we get another one?" So I talk to, and I talk to these folks about every year now, Lone Star Steakhouse, and Outback Steakhouse, and there's a third one that escapes me right now, but another one. And really what drives those particular franchises and their boilerplate that they have, they have a boilerplate size, boilerplate income requirements and whatnot. They require basically 300, what they call plates per day, 300 meals per day, 300 paying customers per day, roughly 9,000 plates per month. You know, we took at our population of just about 29,000 people, so they look at it and they do the math, and they say, "Okay, that means every, every month, one-third of Raytowners have to come into our restaurant." That's, that's, that's a pretty steep pill for them to decline, and a pretty, pretty jagged pill for them to swallow. So also, so we get kind of past that, and they start looking at the economics, and we just talked about $49,000 per household on average in Raytown. So you extrapolate out that family's rent or mortgage, their grocery expenses, their auto expenses, their insurance, whatever else. So then that steakhouse looks at the bottom line and says, "What's left for the steakhouse experience," if you will. So that's just kind of how a process typically goes on a retailer when they evaluate a community and how they make their decision as to whether they're going to move in or not. Quick word about incentives. I, I think over the years, I think we've done a couple of incentive projects since I've been here four and a half years, whatnot, and I think you know that I'm, I'm not particularly a big fan unless there's a definitive cost-benefit matrix at the end of it that benefits the city. You know, anymore, I think we've got to exercise extreme discernment when it comes to the use of incentives, and you've also got to have multi-tenants, in my opinion, greatly desired, especially for larger redevelopment projects, if you will, multiple tenants on that site for it to really work. And we look at kind of the mainstay businesses of the past, and a lot of them aren't there. K-Marts are drying up, Sears are drying up, Best Buy, Best Case probably has, you know, 36 months left in its life. They're still doing decent business, but, you know, most of these, most of these firms are having a really difficult time competing with Amazon.com, and they're falling victim to what we call showrooming. That is, you go to Best Buy, you pick out the TV or DVD player that you like, go home, hop online, buy the same thing cheaper after you've visually identified what it's like in the store. So basically, a lot of brick-and-mortar stores are simply playing the role of showroom or demonstration purposes. So along with that discernment, we've got to continually ask, "What do we get for what we give? Is it an aesthetic change? Is it a tax influx? How are we better by providing this incentive if we, if we provide it at all?" Additionally, clawback provisions. I don't believe we had those in the past. I think last December, we put together an incentive policy that does have clawback provisions. And that simply means, for those, those folks maybe at home aren't familiar with that term, means if an incentive is granted, and that business doesn't make good on whatever it said it was going to do, i.e. if it doesn't hire the, the minimum number of jobs that they promised, or they don't deliver, you know, aesthetic changes or whatnot, then we have our hooks into the deal, and we get paid back for whatever our investment was, or that, that incentive simply goes away. So that's kind of that. Again, in our recruitment effort, you know, this is, this is an example, and you may not be able to read it from where you're sitting, but when, when we, when I, I got here four and a half years ago, you know, I was sort of the beneficiary or the recipient of everybody's wish list of what they really want in Raytown. One of those was Aldi, another one was Chipotle. And Chipotle, we reached out to them at their, at their Colorado office and said, "Hey, you know, we've got some great sites for you, blah, blah, blah." And they said, you know, "No, thanks. We know Kansas City, we're not coming into Raytown," whatever. So we had, we came up with basically a marketing campaign for Chipotle, and it was relatively inexpensive and, and pretty easy to do. And basically, we modeled a message about Raytown in the exact same format that Chipotle markets itself and advertises itself. So this is actually something we sent to Chipotle, and I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but it just says, "So what are you waiting for? Let's do this." And we made a little moniker, calling it Ray-Potlay down at the bottom of the page. And again, they received this electronically and said, you know, "No, thanks, we're not coming." We kept sending them stuff, we sent them posters of this, and they came. So that was the fun one. We did the same thing with Dunkin' Donuts, essentially, IHOP as well, and Aldi was a little different negotiation, but, but ultimately, that was one of the things that the citizens said that they wanted here as well. So creativity is also key in getting some of these folks attention. So as we kind of, kind of head toward, you know, the finish line of this presentation, oftentimes, I get calls from citizens or businesses and saying, you know, "How can we help economic development?" And the best thing that I can suggest is to operate your business with absolute excellence in mind. Try to be the best that you can. This community needs those businesses, they need your neighborhood, and we need them all to be, you know, healthy. And to know what your competition's doing, to try to evolve, you know, if you only do one thing, try to figure out what the future holds for that one thing, and adapt and respond to what those market needs are. The businesses that we've seen maybe leave, probably the thing they have in common is that they watch their competitors go by, and they just assumed that other folks, that their customers were going to come back. So we've got to let the world know that we exist, we've got to be competitive. We live in a very frugal post-recession, if you want to call it a post-recession, the economy's still not nearly where it was in, say, 2005, 2006, early 2007. We live in a very frugal post-recession economy, and if you, if you survey consumers and say, "Would you rather pay $100 for something here," and you're kind of on your own to find your own repair service if something goes wrong, or "Would you pay $150 here if they have a great service plan?" And more times than not, they'll say, "I want it cheap today." The phone book's full of fix-it people. And so we still live in a very frugal post-recession society, whether that's right or wrong, that's really what the market's being, how the, how the market's reacting right now. And consumers are tech-savvy. You know, I mentioned people going and showrooming, and that's one of the things that's really hurting small business right now, is that if you can go to a, a local store and find something for 75 bucks, then you find out exactly what you want and write the number down, the UPC number, and go home, plug it in the computer, and you can buy the thing for 50 bucks. A lot of folks are doing that, and you can't really blame them. Again, businesses changed, and, and we have to, and our businesses have to as well. Again, you know, Barnes &amp; Noble really doesn't exist much anymore. Sears is on its way down, K-Marts are closing daily, and again, Best Buy is probably going that way, and JCPenney's is hanging on by a thread right now. And again, at one point, these are all mainstays that would have been, you know, worthy of a parade in any community when they move in, because it generated a lot of money. Unfortunately, that's kind of dried up as the markets changed. So again, that question comes back of how our residents and how our businesses can assist us in economic development. You know, businesses that look at communities also do their share of showrooming. You know, businesses that look at communities also do their share of showrooming. They come and they drive through our community, and they don't always let us know that they're coming through. You know, ideally, I get the call, says, hey, Tom, meet us here and give us a little tour, and obviously, you take them around, and you show them just the coolest parts of your community. Oftentimes, now they don't. Now they come without warning, and they drive around on their own, and they find all the great places, and maybe all the not-so-great places of any given community. So how our residents and how our businesses can help economic development? And again, I don't want to beat on this, because I know a lot of other folks do too, but by property maintenance and appearance and pride of ownership in your own properties, that's the number-one thing I can ask our businesses and our residents to do. Paint your houses, brush your front walks, mow, you know, make sure that your business or your residence looks as great as it can, and that's what sells this community. Conversely, if those things don't happen, that's what sells against this community. And then, for the last thing that I'll talk about, and then I'll entertain any questions you may have, is the former First Baptist property downtown, or the green space or the downtown redevelopment area. Toward the end of last year, we opted for Flaherty Collins, a developer from Indianapolis. They put together a very preliminary plan for that property, 3.7 acres in the heart of our downtown. That plan included 229 upscale apartments, a 400-space structured parking garage, 40,000 square feet of mixed retail, and maybe some sort of a miniature park, or some sort of a little green area just for ancillary uses. When we, and basically what we approved at that time, we didn't necessarily approve the plan, we approved going forward with them, for them to develop their plan, and come back and show us what it costs, what they bring to the table, and ultimately, what they want the city's involvement to be to make that deal happen. What you have in front of you are really the economics of where we are on that project. As designed, as you saw it, with the upscale apartments and the structured parking and retail and everything, it's about a $40 million project for that 3.7-acre piece of property. The developer can finance roughly $20 million of that. That's fantastic. I can't finance $20 million. But that leaves us a pretty wide gap of another $20 million to get from fantasy to reality. And that's where we start talking about incentives, and that's really what we've kind of been working on for the past little while. And frankly, there's just no way to get from this side of the bridge to that side of the bridge based on this particular project. Even if we invent incentives, even if we pitch money into the deal and capture every cent of sales tax that's generated on that, we're nowhere near $20 million. Frankly, we're probably nowhere near $2 or $3 million. So where we are right now, Flaherty Collins is still kind of scratching their head, they can certainly pair to back the project, but it'd be a significant pairing of that project. We can, Mr. Benson believes we can possibly get a grant for a master plan downtown and another study, you know, whether we do that or not, don't know. We can sell the property, we can sit on it, we can do something else. And this conversation may be worthy of an entirely different study session on down the road, too. But again, that's just really a sincere update as to where we are right now on that particular project. I wish I could come and say, you know, they're going to break ground next week, and we're going to have, you know, 230 brand-new, you know, really cool apartments that rival the Plaza, but there's really no way to bridge that financial gap from what the dream is to reality at this point. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have regarding any of this.
Mr. Rock.
Yeah. First off, thank you for bringing that to us on the downtown property. And you had mentioned something about fresh paint on, you know, commercial business property, residential property, you're absolutely right. And, you know, a good cleanup means there's going to be a market, people will come. So, thanks, Tom.
Mr. Whitefoot.
Tom, you talked about certain steakhouses and that style of a restaurant, like to think about 300 sales a day. What about other style restaurants? For example, IHOP came to Raytown, they seem to be successful. What about restaurants of that caliber? Is there the same type of expectation?
Not so much, no. And in fact, I think, I think other, not necessarily fast food, I think we've got all the market, you know, we're kind of open to anybody in that regard. As far as sort of, not fast food, but quick service, which would be, you know, the Five Guys, or the Red Robins, or things along those lines, I think our market's pretty wide-open for them as well. In fact, we've had conversations with a few of those, and, you know, it's a matter of pairing up, you know, those particular entities that have interest with the folks who happen to own the land in town. And so we've been working on that for a while. So I truly do believe that we're going to have a flurry of new restaurants. Again, the steakhouse is kind of an extreme, and the caveat to how the steakhouse can work without those numbers would be like a mom-and-pop-type operation. The national franchises, they have pretty strict standards of what they have to get out of something. And of course, their payroll continues to go up outside of the boundaries of whatever given location they're in, too. So I mean, they've got, they've got pretty big machines to feed back at the corporate office, too. So that's a lot of what drives that 300 and 9,000 number. But again, the caveat out of that would be, you know, a mom-and-pop, or an entrepreneur starting a similar business. Thanks.
Think the steakhouse model, I've been pounding on Tom's head for the last four years, bring me a, bring me a family-sit-down restaurant, and that's why I think he chose the harsh reality. Mr. Ben Buskirk, anything? You're yielding Mr. Erb's, okay.
Couple questions. While the steakhouse, you go down to Lee Summit, or you go out to Independence, where they built everything out there, would uniqueness draw anybody here, in that you could be the only one here, and it seems like everything's been overbuilt to the point now where there's always that empty building in the Lee Summit Mall now, or out there by Independence, there's quite a few empty buildings actually around the Joe's Crab Shack area all the time, or they seem to be, what's it called today, almost, you know, ripping them in and out of these buildings? I would, is there any merit that you could, that we could actually market that way?
I think if we can find an entity that has a unique concept and shows that their product and their style and their, whatever their widget is, is unique enough that folks will travel, I think we're a very economical community for them to call home base and move into. So yeah, absolutely.
When it comes to the Flaherty &amp; Collins, you know, similar project was going on in Gladstone. What was the differences in their economic situation and our economic situation?
The differences in their economic situation, essentially, a few things. One being, that area was already underway of development. They have a strong, and again, I'm not getting into, you know, a whole, we need to build City Hall somewhere else business, but they have their municipal buildings there, they have a new pool, a very large pool complex that, I don't recall what the amount set them back, but it was, it's a many tens of millions of dollars pool complex, indoor and outdoor. In fact, it's nice enough that you can't call it a pool, it's a nadatorium.
Yes, I saw that.
But the other thing that they have, that they had with their given project, which is somewhat similar, was I think the retail component is absolutely on the shoulders of the city. So Flaherty Collins is building the structure, but the city is entirely 100% responsible for finding its own, signing its own leases and finding its own tenants. So the city's definitely on the hook for, are we going to have a grocery store on the main floor? Are we going to have a shoe store? Are we going to have restaurants? Whatever. They've got to identify them, sign the leases, and make it economical. The other thing is, the city of Gladstone pitched in, and this is a number off the top of my head, may or may not be entirely accurate, but somewhere in the vicinity of $3 million cash to the deal, which I don't have at my disposal. So there are some stark differences in...
Sure. They're the ones that I thought, too.
Right.
When it comes to our downtown streetscape, okay, we've got 3.7 acres down there. Would more land be attractive, or is there a, what's the, which, does it have to go one way or the other? I mean, there's...
Of the folks that we talked to about the green space, nobody's really said, it's not big enough. I mean, certainly, if it was larger property, if it was, and at one point, when Red Development pitched their idea to the city and was moving forward, I believe their plan included everything from pretty much 63rd Street to 59th Street and everything in between. And all in all, I want to say that might have been 100, 120 acres, or something along those lines. But you've also got to look at, how do you acquire that property? And how are your residents going to react to saying, okay, all of a sudden, you're home, or you've had three children and all kinds of stuff, this is going to be where the ice cream shop is? Most folks aren't real recipient to that, or real open to that.
Talking about recapturing back sales taxes and things like that. It seems that the development, obviously, they're going to charge rent for the apartments, and obviously, there's going to be businesses in there, and I'm assuming that will only pay the 20 million and not the 40 million, is the way their math is going.
In fact, the taxes that would come off of that, no, I mean, basically, the $20 million that would be financed by them would simply be through them and their lender. The balance of that extra $20 million, it's unaccounted for, would have to be made up through sales taxes and property taxes and whatnot. But again, unless Fort Knox moves there, unless a Target, or, and again, I'm not making a case for a big-box store, but unless it's a big-box store that just churns a ton of product every day, that generates a ton of income, you know, it's just not going to, the sales taxes generated off that 40,000 square feet of retail isn't going to make a dent in that $20 million hole.
I appreciate you letting us know that. That's good to know. Now, my final thing is, what's the latest on our downtown streetscape? If you've...
I guess with that, I would ask Andy Dole, maybe to...
Is that a fair question to anybody back there, since we're talking about downtown We've been, it's been a couple of years now.
We're actually preparing a presentation on all our projects for the second meeting in September, so if I can delay...
That's fine.
A quick update is, we're trying to, we were trying to coordinate the bids with that and the 350 Highway Bike Ped Trail. The 350 Bike Ped Trail has taken some redesign, and that's slowed us down quite a bit. So I'm thinking there'll be some significant economy of scale by bidding both of those projects at the same time.
We're talking about the downtown, Blue Ridge Downtown and 350?
The 350 Bike Ped Trail, and, no, just the downtown streetscape.
Downtown streetscape, not the Blue Ridge Bicycle.
Correct.
Okay.
That's mainly...
At least we have several things we have to think about.
Right, yeah, we got lots of projects coming.
Okay. Hey, thanks for your answer. Thank you.
Mr. Roger.
Excuse me. You know, Tom, I know we've had a lot of discussions, and this is certainly probably Raytown's favorite subject to talk about, economic development. And I just have a few thoughts I wanted to share, because, in one way, I envy you to be in the position you're in, because we're selling a mentality, truthfully, because to a lot of people who are in business that want to make money, maybe they think that lower-class communities like, you know, lower-middle class really shouldn't be going out to eat, but you know, as I go from ward, or house to house when I'm knocking on doors on my ward, that's their favorite subject, you know, when are we going to get a new restaurant? We want a restaurant. And I really find it kind of interesting that you said that Chipotle, you know, really didn't want to come here, and probably one of the companies that I hear most often is Panera. And I know that, you know, Panera was asked, would you come to Raytown? They said, in no terms will we come to Raytown. And so, that's a mentality. And so I wonder sometimes, maybe just they, you know, if they can make a million dollars profit, that's just not enough. Chipotle, I bring it up because one of my assistant coaches works at Chipotle, he said Sunday evening, they had for three straight hours, their line to get waited on was out the front door. So it doesn't tell me that Raytown doesn't want to go out to eat, or they won't go out to eat. Makes you wonder why we had to lure or coax them in, or makes you wonder why we couldn't get a Panera. So I don't understand it. Again, I'll go back to the mentality. Certainly, there's money to be made in Raytown. They do want to go out to eat, they do talk about it. And I don't know what the magic formula is, but I guess that's what we're really selling, is a mentality.
Absolutely, and I'm not, I'm not going to say that Panera is coming, but we have had some meaningful conversations with them over the past couple of years. At one point, I think we came close on a particular site, that site was swooped up by another entity, kind of as Panera was doing their homework. So I don't think we are well outside of their range of what they want to do, and I think we're getting closer to that range of what they want to do. So I won't count them out just yet.
I'm going to tag on to that for a second. And Jim, you know, five years ago, we didn't have an Economic Development Director. I remember sitting down on the chair when I took office, and I looked through a file folder of places that had contacted us, and with no evidence of any response, and Panera was one of them. Panera had contacted us, and you look at the file, and you see no response. And I think, you know, we've changed some things, and we've addressed some things, and we've got, we've got more activity out there, and I think we've made some great inroads in that. But, and one of the things that, we saw the developer last week, and talked afterwards, and one of the things that hit me was that we've got to have a mentality on this board, in this audience, in the viewing audience, in all of the citizens, we've got to have a mentality and acceptance of what we want to be. And we've got to talk about, and we've got to promote, like Gladstone did, they started years ago with a plan. And whether there are, as their councilmen change, the plan is still in effect. And it was accepted, they're living towards it, everything they do works towards it, they're working a plan. It doesn't change with the change of council, it doesn't change with the change of administration. It's a plan that was accepted, the citizens have become owners of the plan, the board has become owners of the plan, and they're working that. And I don't think we have that. I don't think we have the nucleus of, amongst ourselves and amongst the citizens, of what it is that we want to be. And I think we struggle with that. And I think we've got to take some steps, and we've been talking with John and staff about taking some steps to, in fact, put a plan into effect, and a plan that, you know, is, becomes owned by the citizens because they're a part of that plan, they're helping to develop that plan through hearings and through participation, but it becomes owned by this board and this administration, and that's where we need to be. And I hope that, I hope that we move in that direction, I hope that we move very quickly in that direction. And that's what, you know, one of the options that Tom gave us there was to look at a plan. And Mr. Benson, I know, is looking currently at seeking some funding for such a plan, and that's where we need to be, in my opinion. Then you work the plan, and you stay with that. So, my two cents. Other questions, comments on the right side here? Okay, very good. Mr. Mock, back to you.
Yeah. This is going to get asked, are we hearing anything from Block &amp; Company?
Not daily. And Block &amp; Company is, you know, very key to our retail growth on 350. They own a lot of the property that we have here in town. Occasionally, we hear that they're working with something we haven't seen physical, and this isn't me being coy either, but occasionally, we'll hear that they're working on certain things, but we're yet to receive any plans or definitive confirmation that they have somebody really looking at the property.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, very good. We've been at this for 50 minutes. Mr. Green?
Sorry, I just thought of a thing really quick. I was just curious, then, since apparently the financial gap for the green space is going to be unobtainable, if, what our, like, next action on that's going to be, if we're going to issue another RFP, if we're going to talk to a few of the other companies that made presenting, issue or presentments, or, you know?
Personally, I think, I think maybe that is an issue for maybe even another study session, where that's all we talk about. Because there are a number of different options. As I said before, we can, you know, push the RFP out again, we can ask Flaherty Collins to pare down the project to whatever that would look like, we can sit on the property, we can slap a for-sale sign out there, you know, whatever, whatever this board advises us to do is where we'll go. But I think, I think it definitely requires more conversation to really determine a true path for what's next.
Mr. Ben Buskirk?
Thank you. As a city, is there anything we can do to put a fire under Block &amp; Company with all the property? I know they've been bailing a lot of hay over there, but I don't think it's too profitable for them, probably.
I think they definitely know that we are anxious for them to move on securing some additional tenants. And right now, they just own a lot of property. And in, I believe in their eyes, and again, I'm projecting my thoughts onto them right now... now, we are one of their many properties. So it's got to be, I think, sticking on their local folks. And as of the past six or eight months, they have two, not new individuals, but new two marketing property, marketing the main property that they have in Raytown. Both Bill Moss and William Glasgow have actually been really great to work with. And I believe that those two gentlemen are committed to finding solutions for that property and for other properties that they market here in Raytown. So I would say that I have seen from Blocking Company a significant increase in their interest to get something done over the past six months or so. And we're building positive relationships with those gentlemen as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
I've kind of been sitting back and thinking about saying this and decided not to, but, you know, I think as a community, and kind of what the mayor brought up, is that we do have to have a plan. We've done things for so many years a certain way. And of course, I occasionally break out a little phrase that kind of drives the mayor crazy, but you can't change anything if you don't change anything. You can never expect a different outcome if you do things the same way. And kind of the mentality of the community is, well, we've got a vacant building sitting over here. That's where they ought to go, not right here. And these businesses have business models that tell them location, traffic counts, everything else that really makes certain locations more desirable. And the idea that this vacant building where somebody else went out of business is going to be a better place for them isn't always a better idea. But, yeah, the master plan, the people taking care of their property, I mean, those are all things that are big things. And it's easy to sit in a house with peeling paint or whatever, and tall grass, and those people drive through, and they see houses like that, and then they don't want to be part of the community or vacant property or whatever. So it's a cyclical thing, and it's not just Tom going out and generating interest in vacant buildings that we have. It's community development, working with Tom to do things in this community, to better this community, to help create a better economic environment. It's a very complicated thing. It's more than just Tom going out and knocking on doors. So I do believe, as the mayor said, a good plan set forth for boards to come would be a great idea.
Okay, with that, we've now almost hit 55 minutes on this. Tom, great presentation. Thank you. A lot of questions still out there. I do think we'd like to have a work session sooner than later, or a study session regarding the specifics of the green space and where that wants to go. So I know you and John are working on that, and I'd ask for that to come quickly here. But with that, I'm going to dispense with any further discussion during the study session, and we're going to go to legislative session. On the regular agenda, we've got the first item, and I'll ask the city attorney to read item number one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, a resolution authorizing an employment agreement between the City of Raytown and Martha Mont as Finance Director for the city.
Mr. Sharma, I know that you've worked very hard, sir, to fill this vacancy. It's an important part of your team. Would you like to further elaborate on what's before, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Mark Lathery, the previous Finance Director, resigned in April, and his last day was at the end of May. Since then, city advertised for this position at a local, regional, and a national level, from where we attracted some very highly competent individual. We interviewed the candidates and then selected Martha Mont for the Finance Director position. I would like to thank you for the interviewed team, which was comprised of staff as well as a couple of governing body members, Alderman Charlotte Melson and Alderman Bill Van Busker. We all agreed that Martha was the most qualified candidate for this job. She has a Bachelor's of Business Administration degree, and she is about to conclude her Masters in December 2015. She has experience with the local as well as county government. What stood out was her experience in financial management, budget development, and employee leadership and training. Her knowledge of governmental fund-based accounting, strong communication skills, as well as open-door management style, ability to collaborate, and encouragement toward creative problem-solving were key for her selection in her leadership style. She has experience in corporate and government accounting, and has experience in managing complexity facing the finance department. It was apparent that her degree of dedication, resourcefulness, and professionalism was pretty Currently, she is a Budget Officer with Green County, Missouri, was a Finance Director with the City of Neosha, Missouri, and was Finance Financial Analyst with the City of Springfield as her experience. She carries professional certification, Certified Government Financial Manager, as well as Certified Public Fund Investment Manager. She would be a great asset to this organization, and I would highly recommend her for the position of the Finance Director.
Thank you. Mr. Van Busker.
I, as Mr. Sharma said, I had an opportunity to sit in on the interview with Ms. Mont, and I feel she's very qualified, would do an excellent job for our city. And she seemed excited about the possibility of coming here and working with us. So I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Got a motion, the second made by Ms. Melson. Original motion, Mr. Van Busker. We're into discussion. Mr. Kramer? Ms. Melson?
I did have an opportunity to sit in on the interview, and I thought she would bring a lot of enthusiasm and all that expertise to Raytown. So I'm looking forward to working with her and the finance capabilities that we will be embarking on soon.
Any further discussion? Attorney call the vote, please.
Mr. Van Busker?
Yes.
Ms. Melson?
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
Mr. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Ertz?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Green?
Yes.
Mr. Azier?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Green?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number two, please.
A resolution expressing the City of Raytown's opposition to the 2014 sales tax exemption.
Turn to Mr. Lightfoot. As Chairman of the Legislative Committee, sir, anything you'd like to introduce on that
Yes, Mayor. This is something we discussed at the last Legislative Committee meeting. And although I didn't have the entire support of the committee, I had the large majority. And I can say, this legislation, I think, would have a direct impact on Raytown if it were to be upheld. If it were to pass, the special sales tax exemptions, to me, seem like they're more special interest-type things that were kind of pushed through, just like both sides do. Absolutely no, for my part, no kind of partisan politics on this whatsoever. I make my decision based on what the impact to Raytown would be, and I think we would have a fiscally-financial impact that would be very devastating to our city for at least a two-year timeframe. That's my point of view. I do know that the numbers that are provided from the governor's office could be inflated. They say that the fiscal impact on Raytown could be $1 million. You know, I don't know if it would be that much, but even if it were to be a quarter of that much, $250,000, our budget doesn't have $250,000 in it to play with. And I think it would directly lead to probably employees losing their jobs or less infrastructure improvements. So that's my opinion, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Van Busker.
I do have a differing opinion. I actually liken this to a feeding frenzy happening throughout our state, which I believe is based on flawed figures, unsubstantiated claims, and a campaign of misinformation, thus leading some organizations in a number of our cities to panic and protest this legislation. It was enacted to help promote economic growth, give tax relief to businesses, and create jobs in our state. I'm going to read a letter from our former state representative and now State Senator Will Kraus regarding this matter, which was sent to our city. I request that this letter be placed in the record. It is my understanding that Raytown is being asked to weigh in on the veto of Senate Bills 612, 662, 584, and 693. I am requesting that the city take no action on this item. I sponsored Senate Bill 662 on behalf of a Lee Summit business that had faced what I call notification by audit. T.J. Rehock, owner of Extreme Gymnastics, was audited by the Department of Revenue and told he was supposed to be collecting sales tax, something he had previously not been told. The department went after three years of back taxes. The base Senate Bill 662 simply says that the Department of Revenue must notify businesses of sales tax change policies, and if they do not, and they cannot collect back taxes. This is simply a fairness issue. The official fiscal note for the base bill was $0. The governor now claims that it will cost the state and local jurisdictions as much as $100 million. This is one of the many unsupported inflated numbers he is using to support a veto. Senate Bill 612 contains a notification language as well as an extension of the distribution of the non-resident athletics and entertainers' tax. That language is heavily supported by the arts community. Senate Bill 584 redefines tax exemptions for several industries to adjust for what the legislature saw as misrepresentations. It includes redefining places of entertainment to not include gymnastics or dance studios. Senate Bill 584 also includes a new tax exemption for data centers, a provision that many cities and chambers of commerce have been asking for for several years. Again, the governor's using inflated numbers justify a veto on this bill. Most of the exemptions are now in place, or should be in place because of existing statutes. The Springfield News Leader rightly called on the governor to show us your work, as his inflated numbers made no sense. The governor has been guilty of using such scare tactics in the past, and the paper's editorial said it was time to stop the practice. For instance, to hot the number, he suggests for graphing calculators, 500 such devices would have to be sold for every high school in Missouri in one weekend, to come up with the figures that he's coming up with. Senate Bills 612, 662, 584, and 693 were well thought out and heavily debated, both in committee and on the floor in both chambers. Each went to a conference committee of both House and Senate members for a final look, which is why they were passed in the last few days. I fully support each of these bills and respectfully request that you take no action on the governor's request for supportive of veto. Sincerely, Senator Will Kraus. And so I might add that I will not support this resolution. And if it is passed, I will not be signing it. So, thank you.
Mr. Ertz?
Thank you. And as everybody here is right on this, it's if we like it or if we don't. In talking to our state representative, current state representative that represents Raytown, Tom McDonald, he was not aware of any of these going to the committee. It could be a difference of opinion, but I just want to tell you, there is another opinion as to how this went out, and that's why we're here to talk about. I don't really mind if the state of Missouri wants to eliminate the state portion of the sales tax for these entities, but these taxes were duly voted on by the citizens of Raytown. Two of them were just renewed months ago. And they were duly elected by us, and to give up our rights and let state representatives control our destiny, I think that's a bad road to go down. What they're, if they wanted to, when they remove a sales tax for, and these are just sales taxes for certain entities on certain items. One of them is used cars over 10 years old that might, you know, one of them was aircraft parts. They were going for individual things. Granted, nobody knows how much, and I agree with both of them, nobody knows how much money this will affect us. But in our economic condition and with our budget, any loss is a huge loss. So why, if they felt the state of Missouri could afford to give these incentives, that's one thing, but to impose those on all the cities, the library, the fire district, all these entities will also lose money when, if this veto is not upheld. So I'll be siding with Mr. Lightfoot on this, and regrettably, maybe the state of Missouri will go back and look at this and take out the, what they do not legislate. So, thank you.
Mr. Azier?
I guess my concern is, according to the Hancock Amendment, that the sales taxes are originated within the city, and they have to be approved by the people. So these are taxes that did not originate at the state level. And the people who are voting for this particular act have very little communication, oftentimes that I see in the different forms, with their cities. And now, all of a sudden, they are choosing to deny the very people who pass those taxes the right to collect them. And if this is the precedent where, because I see this as a form of micromanagement, to say this is what the cities can or can't do? And if we let this happen on this particular issue, what other doors are they going to open? So, I wouldn't support it.
Mr. Jason Green?
Well, believe it or not, I actually have aspects of every single alderman's conversation I do agree with, even though there's various opinions. My major concern here, first off, is that, you know, as a state legislator, if I want to enact tax cuts, you know, I'm going to do with revenue streams that I control. Instead, that's not the case. We're the one that's having to shoulder the burden in some respects in terms of, okay, the tax cuts have been made, now you guys need to make the decisions on where you're going to cut. That aspect frustrates me because, you know, it's just the dichotomy between state and local governments. Being said, in my opinion, whatever resolution we adopt here, I don't think it's going to make a hill of beans a difference on what's going to end up happening, number one. Number two, I don't want to engage in a game of political football, which I think was taking place in terms of between the governor's office and the supermajority in the House and Senate, if you will. So I'm going to vote no against the resolution, just because I don't want to engage within this. I wish these tax cuts were more simplistic in nature. I do feel, I do agree with Alderman and Lightfoot in that there is some selective interest, I think, in some of these tax cuts, as opposed to something that's just flat and basic. But I'm not happy about it. However, philosophically, I'm voting no against this resolution.
Mr. Josh Green?
Well, this is one of the times that you'll actually see me and the other alderman green probably disagree up here. I do have some of the same concerns that many of these people brought up here, but instead of beating a dead horse, I'm just going to say... instead of beating a dead horse, I'm just going to say a few things, and then I'm going to be done. Essentially, first off, looking at the legislation at hand, it really does, to me, reek of that there's tax exemptions for only certain industries, and to me, it just seems like it's a piece of legislation written by special interest groups and lobbyists. Again, I don't actually know if that's the case, but it just reeks of that to me. Secondly, Democrats are saying that it could affect Raytown with $1 million in difference financial gap. Republicans apparently are saying zero. So to me, the number has to be somewhere in there, because, I mean, personally, I've always said this, I don't, you know, I don't care about what Democrats are saying, I don't care about what Republicans are saying, I'm caring about Raytown. And even if this affects Raytown, $100,000, $50,000, that's a gap that we, right now, on a shoestring budget, cannot afford. We have to do this, and essentially, to me, this is a big slap in the face, if you will, to local control. Essentially, if the voters of Raytown decide that they want to allow for a, you know, a public safety sales tax or a transportation sales tax, and the state comes in and essentially tells us, well, no, your voters, they may have approved this, but we're going to say that they can't do it. To me, that's inherently wrong, and against not only the concepts of Democratic and Republican rule, but it's just, it's a shame. So I will be supporting this resolution.
Very good. Any further discussion? Mr. Kramer, before we go back around to you.
I'm kind of on the side of Alderman Van Buschirk and Alderman Green. I'm kind of in between the two of them. However, I've always maintained that what we do here, partisan politics should not take place in what happens on this dais up here. And Alderman Green put it best, that it's just a political football, is all it is, and it's two people kicking it around, and we're stuck in the middle. And by signing this resolution, it'll have no direct impact on our community. It's not going to make it better, it's not going to make it worse by signing it or not signing it. I just disagree with the whole thing, and I as well will not sign it if it passes.
Okay. Mr. Van Buschirk.
Just a reminder to everyone, you know, it sounds like, from the discussion here, that the state has taken away our ability to tax. That's further thing from the truth. What the state has done is said they're the ones that actually determine what businesses, what products could be taxed. We haven't determined that. We set up specific taxes, like, you know, transportation sales tax and things like that. They're not taking away our ability to do that. We'll still collect those. It just may be on some specific products or certain businesses that we might not be collecting taxes. So they're not telling us we can't tax, or that we don't have the ability to do that, or not taking away anything from our municipality or from our powers. In fact, it's just the opposite of that. The state is the one that made those determinations in the first place. And when taxes are lowered, it's a good thing. It brings about economic health, never the opposite. Thank you.
The buttons are going off now. I'll go to Mr. Lightfoot.
Well, I'll agree with Mr. Van Buschirk that typically, I'm always for lower taxes and tax cuts, but when I do agree with tax cuts, it's generally for everyone and not special interests. What I do know is whether the number's inflated or not inflated, I'm not playing partisan politics here. I could cite one example from one senator that doesn't even represent our city, and I respect Will Kraus, he's a great guy, but that's just one cherry picked example that was provided. I could cite something from the governor's office that could give you the opposite example. The bottom line is, this will affect Raytown, and we will have less tax revenue based on this passing. So the bottom line is, our city cannot afford to have any less revenue off sales tax. So I will agree with Mr. Van Buschirk that typically, I would always support a lower tax. That's obviously what I'm about, but this is not an equal-based tax cut. This isn't an income tax break for everybody. This is specialty items and specialty places, and I just can't support that.
Mr. Ertz.
Yes, and we're only making the suggestion here. I know this has no weight, and nobody's, but from my understanding, many, many cities are doing the same thing. Obviously, they all have budgets similar to ours, and don't appreciate the state coming in and affecting their budgets in negative ways. You know, you look at an estimated amount of revenue that you'd be taking in, and this just won't be there, and it just doesn't seem fair to me on that. As far as, you know, I'm sure if there's, if I was three years back in taxes, I don't think I'm going to want the legislators or expect the legislators to give me a break so I don't have to pay my back taxes. I think, you know, I don't know if it's up to legislatures or to know if you should be collecting taxes or not. I would think a business owner would know that. But again, we're talking about a situation in a city that wasn't here, and if that's why this all started, it doesn't give me any more feeling, you know, sympathy for that. So I will be signing it, and I would appreciate the support. Thank you.
Mr. Azier.
Yeah, I think it's really a really simple issue that other aldermen already hit on. This is political football. In a year that's an election year, when the majority in the General Assembly is going to use the quote, "We lowered taxes to get reelected," and I think that's what it's really all about. In this case, they're going to lower our taxes, not theirs. If they truly wanted to get reelected and lower taxes, why didn't they lower any of the taxes at the state level? They didn't. It stinks. That's why I'm supporting it.
Mr. Green. Josh Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, I really want to make one more, or actually, two more comments here, and then I'm going to be probably done here. I do agree that there's some political football involved here. I do. That being said, I can't personally sit idly by and at least not say something that I think is wrong, or I say, again, something against what I think is wrong. Other than that, and I really want to touch on this one more time, is that I think when you favor certain nonessential industries, when it comes to tax breaks, or when it comes to basically regulatory advantages or anything like that, you're breeding cronyism, and I think that that's basically hurting our economy as a whole, because, you know, essentially, when government's favoring one sector or one industry over another, you're playing political football, not only with cities and their tax bases, but also you're playing political football with special interest groups and basically letting lobbyists write legislation with that. Is there a motion on the floor to approve this?
Not as of yet, no.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
You want to give it to Michael? Okay. Motion's been made by Mr. Josh Green, seconded by Mr. Lightfoot, the committee chair. I will tell you, from my perspective, according to Missouri Municipal League, there's probably been 45 other cities across the state that have already written such letters that we're talking about here. It doesn't matter to me whether or not we write this letter or offer a resolution, but what I have brought to my own mind is that anything that the state does to impact our local citizens and impact negatively the income that we rely on to run our city on a daily basis, and that's public works, I mean, it's the employees of the city, it's services, it's programs, anything that the state does without our weighing in on it is wrong, whether it's a dollar or if it's a million dollars. And I have seen the report from the legislative's, legislatures committee that did their own numbers on this thing, and their own numbers were that it would affect Raytown at about $800,000. Governor's report was a million, but it doesn't matter to me if it's a million, or it's $800,000, or if it's $10,000. It'll have an impact on this city. If not immediately, it'll have it in short term. I mean, it's going to the license bureau over here, and vehicles over 10 years old, you don't have to pay a tax on them anymore if this is approved. And in most of, I think, the average age of licenses, you know, being processed by that bureau is 11 years old, so we could potentially lose all the revenue off of that. So my point is, we need to take a stand. Whether we write this, write a letter, or if we call our Congress, or call our legislatures, whatever it takes, we've got to make a stand, because our citizens out there are going to be impacted by it, and they're going to be impacted by it negatively. And I think we've got to take a stand. Whether we write individual letters, or we write this letter this resolution permits, I think we've got to take a stand, and we've got to keep the state out of our local business. So that's my own opinion. Any other discussion? We've got a motion in a second. No further discussion? Ask the attorney to call the vote, please.
Alderman Josh Green.
Yes.
Alderman Michael Lightfoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green.
No.
Alderman Charlotte Melson.
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Buschirk.
No.
Alderman Joe Kramer.
No.
Alderman Jim Azier.
Yes.
Alderman Pat Ertz.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Mock.
Yes.
Motion passes. Good discussion. Ask the attorney to read item number three, please.
Item number three. A resolution declaring certain property owned by the city of Raytown as surplus and authorizing disposition of such property by auction.
Mr. Nola, as our public works director, anything to add, sir?
All of these vehicles have been replaced with funding provided to us by the capital sales tax fund. There are three patrol vehicles, that would be Unit 103, 105, and 106, that are coming out of service due to mileage and the age and the use as patrol cars. Unit 223 and 224 were vehicles in public works that are coming out mainly due to age and rust on the bodies. And then Unit 302 was an EMS vehicle, was an ambulance, coming out of service due to mileage. And then the 2000 Dodge Dakota was a code enforcement vehicle that's mainly coming out due to the age of the vehicle and need for some possible transmission work, as we believe it's, the transmission is starting to fail on that vehicle, and that's why it was replaced. We will sell all of these vehicles, utilizing the Purple Wave online auction that has worked very well for us in the past. I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Mr. Van Buschirk.
It was brought up, I think, the last time we had surplus items that were going to Purple Wave. A request that maybe you come back with some kind of a report as to what kind of sales we were making and what revenue we were bringing in from that. Do you have any information for us?
I do not have that information. I do know that it's generated almost $20,000 of revenue into the capital sales tax from items that we have sold. I can compile that information, and I can email it to the board, and we can either have a discussion item on it in the future, or, but I can't provide that information, but some of those.
Very good. I think that'd be good.
Just to know what we're recouping.
Thank you.
Mr. Jason Green.
Yeah, I just want to express that I'm happy you said that, Alderman Van Buschirk. I do agree, it's always nice to see when we've had the conversations about the, being purple waved in the past, and I'm always kind of curious just how much you, you know, we recoup on these things. So, anyway, it'll be interesting. Thank you.
Mr. Ertz.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Ertz, seconded by Mr. Kramer. Any further discussion before we vote? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Ertz.
Yes.
Alderman Kramer.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Azier.
Yes.
Alderman Mock.
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green.
Yes.
Alderman Michael Lightfoot.
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green.
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Buschirk.
Yes.
Alderman Charlotte Melson.
Item number four, please.
Item number four. A resolution authorizing and approving the continuation of an existing contract with Infinity Building Services LLC for mowing and nuisance abatement services in excess of $15,000, but within budgeted limits for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Mr. Benson, Development and Public Affairs Director, excuse me, anything to add, sir?
Just a brief, just very briefly, this is the third year of a three-year contract with Infinity Building Services for our mowing and nuisance abatement, as Mr. Will just read. We will be going out for bids for these services moving forward into future years, but this is just to approve our current year that we're in, in the expenditure of our budgeted amounts for those services.
Question, Mr. Benson, Mr. Kramer.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Mr. Kramer's got the motion, seconded by Mr. Josh Green. Discussion before we vote on item number four.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mock.
This has nothing to do with the contract, but I just had a question with the Infinity Services. Are they taking care of the property there at 350 Highway in Westridge?
Anytime we issue a work order, they'll take care of that property. Yes, I don't know. My understanding on, you're talking on the east side of Westridge?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
My understanding is the current property owner has been taking care of that property this summer.
They've been taking care of it this summer, so Infinity hasn't mowed that property at all this year?
If they had, maybe early in the spring, they may have, but over the last few months, my understanding has been the property owner has been doing that.
Mr. Azier.
Mr. Benson, for the mowing, I'm just curious, that includes a lot of the yards that we mow because people don't mow them, is that true?
That is correct.
So when they bid, how is that bid? I mean, do they do it by the yard, by the hour?
It's based on the contract that they submitted, which is on a, it's an hourly rate, and so the amount of work they do, if the yard is or a property is smaller, they'll charge less versus if it's a larger property, it takes them more time.
Yeah, obviously, that would be true, but when they're bidding that, they don't know what they're always bidding on, because we don't know how many people a quarter are not going to mow the lawn, so I just was kind of curious, what do they end up getting for mowing the average lawn? Do you have any idea? I mean, I noticed the people on our block that have, the companies come in, they're there sometimes 15 minutes.
Right. I don't know the average, I don't have that information readily at hand, but I'm estimating that's going to be in the ballpark of two to three, maybe $400 a yard.
Well, and what I'm really suggesting is that, you said you're going to be putting out for bid again probably next year, that maybe if we could use some kind of formula so we had an idea of what we were really paying, at least, though, I mean, I'd like to know, because certainly, you know, we might find agencies out there that might be willing to mow for less if they understood how we did this.
Yes, and I can look into that information for you.
And again, I know it's difficult, because you don't know exactly what they're going to be mowing, but that's why I think that somehow there should be in the formula a way of determining what we're paying them per hour, or whatever it is.
Mr. Ertz.
Just so I'm reminded, though, all mowing that's done because property was abated is charged to the owner of the property or onto their taxes, correct?
That is correct.
Funny that we shouldn't go out and try to get the best deal possible, but we're made whole by whatever that amount is, correct?
Theoretically, yes. It's not necessarily at the end of this budget.
Assuming somebody is.
We'll be held whole, but eventually, yes. When we have a work order, they provide us, obviously, an invoice, we pay that invoice, the finance department then takes that, whatever that invoiced amount was, plus the city's administrative costs, and builds that to the applicable property owner. They have 30 days to pay that. If they don't pay it, that information's passed on to Jackson County, and lien is filed on the property.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Buschirk.
Did we bid this out?
We went out for bid in 2012 for these services, for a three-year contract.
And that was, how many year?
It was in 2012, so 2012 was the first year, last year was the second, and this will be, this is our third year.
So this is a renewal of that same contract?
That's correct.
My assumption is that we're My assumption is that we're happy with the services they're providing, or we wouldn't be asking for renewal of the contract.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Azier.
One last question, Mr. Benson. Do we have, do we attempt to or have any way to track how much money we actually do recover or may be losing? I mean, is it possible that we could be losing money in this venture?
When you say losing money, that we're not, we don't recoup from the property owners?
Yeah, you lose money in the sense that we may not actually get it back.
It, it's a long-term issue of getting that money back when you say get it back, because when liens are filed, it could be one year, it could be 20 years before we get it back. We don't know.
Right. And what I'm alluding to is if, what's our total amount going to be for the year?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
What? I'm sorry, what?
I, I didn't hear your question.
What's, what's the total amount that we're probably going to spend on these properties in a year's time?
We've budgeted $30,000 for these services.
Thirty thousand, so theoretically, what you're saying is that we're going to get all 30,000 back, comma, eventually.
That's correct.
Call the vote, please.
Alderman Kramer.
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green.
Yes.
Alderman Van Buskirk.
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot.
Yes.
Alderman Mock.
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green.
Yes.
Alderman Melson.
Yes.
Alderman Azier.
Yes.
Alderman Ertz.
Yes.
I guess I will read.
Let's move on.
Item five. A resolution authorizing the continuation of an existing agreement with Raytown Animal Hospital, Inc., for veterinary services associated with animal control in excess of $15,000, but within budgeted amounts for the fiscal year 2013-2014.
Mr. Benson.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Mr. Benson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Benson, anything for you first? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Sorry, I didn't see you sitting there.
This is very similar, the same as our previous application, except this is for veterinary services that assists our animal control operations. We are in the final year of this contract, which was signed, which was agreed, or, excuse me, approved in October, on October 4th, 2000, 2011, with Raytown Animal Hospital, for the budgeted amount of $35,000.
Question, Mr. Benson. Question is made in second, and original motion by Mr. Kramer, seconded by Mr. Ertz. We're into discussion on this item. Mr. Benson, I've, I've gotten a lot of, I say a lot, a handful of complaints, if you will, over the years. This is the last year of this current contract. You're looking for authorization to finish out this contract through this year.
That is correct.
And then, I'm sorry if I missed it, but you're going to look at going back out to, to bid the services.
That is correct also.
Okay. All right. We've got a motion in a second. Mr. Van Buskirk.
I was just going to say, I, actually, there is some positive things about this animal hospital and the doctor's job that they do, so I favor renewal of the contract.
This is not renewal of the contract, right? This is authorization to pay the final year of the contract? Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
Authorization for the final year.
That's correct.
That's the point, we renew it. I'll probably be in favor of renewing it.
We'll be asking you at that time. All right. No further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Kramer.
Yes.
Alderman Ertz.
Yes.
Alderman Melson.
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green.
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green.
Yes.
Alderman Van Buskirk.
Yes.
Alderman Azier.
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot.
Yes.
Alderman Mock.
Yes.
All right, let me ask the board if anyone desires an environmental break. At this point, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six discussion items, including public hearings. We're going to be here for a while. This is an opportune time to take an environmental break if we need it. I'm getting heads nodding. I ask the indulgence of the audience, please, we need, we need a break. So we'll take a five-minute break if we can, please, and reconvene in five minutes. Thank you.
I just, I thought I was going to splat.
I thought we were going to lose you.
I was trying to hold.
Yeah, I didn't expect, I didn't expect you to come back.
Could you hear me on your cough?
It's not that naked, but I just, I was surprised you came back down.
Well, I felt better for a little bit. The next time that starts, I'm out of here. Because it's not going to stop that day. I thought I was going to pass out.
Oops, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Sorry.
Some of the guys, some of the guys, some of the trees, you guys, that's what I'm saying. It's like, smiling, it's like, you know, you're trying to determine why you're like, 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 you're like,
Yeah, Mr. Benson, I do want to add one comment. I do believe that it's important that we do expedite the amount of time, people oftentimes get a little bit frustrated with the city, they don't understand that there are laws that we have to follow, that we just can't chimp on a problem and solve it immediately. At least this tries to expedite it in a little more fashionable way, even though it may not be as fast as the, the neighbors like, we are doing our best.
All right, if there's no other questions for John at this time, Mr. Kramer.
Yes, mine's more of a statement also, it, it kind of goes back to what Mr. Cole presented to us earlier about how these businesses, prospective businesses, when they come to our community, they drive through our community, and a lot of times it's unannounced, and if, if we can abate these nuisances in a quicker manner, so that, that way, it's part of the cyclical thing that, that I talked about, where if we're able to abate these nuisances in a speedier fashion, it's going to make our neighborhoods look better, maybe people, the repeat offenders will start to get the idea, and people start taking pride in their community.
All right, with that, I'm going to ask if anyone in the audience would like to talk to the Board of Aldermen regarding this particular item at this time. This is your opportunity. Public comment, once, twice, three. Okay, Mr. Van Busker, we have completed our public comment, we're in, any other staff comments, John?
Nothing further.
Okay, then we'll go to board discussion. I'm going to close the public hearing, go to board discussion, Mr. Van Busker.
Thank you. Certainly first, I would like to echo the sentiments of my esteemed colleague, Mr. Kramer.
You have to narrow that down.
You've forgotten her name.
But any of them, certainly. And related to Mr. Cole's comments earlier, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt all of the amendments to this ordinance, as well as the, any changes that were made by our staff.
I would like to second it.
You guys want to fight over it?
I don't.
Flip for it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mock.
I think I seconded, sir.
We've got two other seconds down here, I actually heard Mr. Azier first.
Oh.
So the motions are made by Mr. Van Busker, seconded by Mr. Azier, for approval of item number six. Any further discussion with these, with the motion and second being made? Call or vote, please.
Mr. Van Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Azier?
Yes.
Mr. Ertz?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Green?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Green?
Yes.
Ms. Melson?
Yes.
Mr. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
We are making progress. Item number seven is a public hearing to consider a site development plan for redevelopment of properties located at 9509 East 63rd Street and 6300 Evanston. I'll ask the city attorney to read the second, or place the second reading into the record on item number seven, please.
Second reading of Bill Number 636414, Section 13, An Ordinance Granting Approval of a Site Development Plan Subject to Certain Conditions for Redevelopment of Properties Located at 9509 East 63rd Street and 6300 Evanston in Raytown, Missouri.
Thank you, Mr. Wellarth. I will reopen the public hearing at this time. Would anyone on the board like to share any ex parte communication they may have had on this subject at this time? Mr. Lightfoot.
I have had ex parte communication regarding this subject, but I'll listen to all the facts before I vote.
Mr. Van Busker.
I also have had communication related to the matter. I will keep an open mind until all the evidence and information is presented to us.
Mr. Azier.
Likewise.
Raise your hand if you have any true confessions here.
I, I as well, yeah, have, will keep an open mind until I weigh all facts and consider all avenues.
Mr. Kramer.
Me too.
And the other, Mr. Green.
Same as well.
And I'm going to chime in as well, I've had, I haven't got you yet, I haven't got you yet. Mr. Mock? Just one, just one of your confessions at this time?
Yes, I've had plenty of, no, I've, I just, I just.
Just particular this item. Okay.
Goodbye.
I too have had communication on this subject. In any event, I get to break a tie, which will be, I think, the second vote in seven years, I will do it with proper consideration given to all the topics. Okay, with that, Mr. Benson, anything you'd like to add from last week's introduction, sir?
Just summarize what was discussed at last week's meeting. Mark Evans with CCC Development is seeking approval of the site development plan in relation to the city's central business district design standards as provided in the, in the zoning ordinance. The site development plan submitted by the applicant proposes to redevelop two properties located at 9509 East 63rd Street and 6300 Evanston, which adjoining one another. The project as proposed would demolish the two existing, or existing buildings on each of these properties, as well as the parking areas involved, would involve regrading of the properties and construction of a 8,233 square foot Family Dollar retail store, as well as certain public improvements which are primarily along Evanston Avenue. The property, these two properties are zone neighborhood commercial, therefore the use as a retail store isn't permitted use. As such, this application does not involve approval of the use, that is already approved. This is simply approval of the site development plan for how the development of the properties will look. The proposed, well, let me back up. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this application at their July 10th meeting of this year. Following conclusion of the public hearing, they, by a vote of six in favor and one against, did recommend approval of the application or the site development plan, subject to the following waivers and conditions. One, a waiver to the driveway location. Two, a waiver to the access from 63rd Street, which the CBD design standards call out not to be allowed, they are proposing a driveway on 63rd. Three, the waiver to the maximum setback of four feet. The building as proposed is built up close to the front property line, but at a setback of six feet on one side and seven feet on the other. Fourth, waiver to the ground floor transparency on the east facade facing Evanston Avenue, which specifies a minimum of 25% transparency window space, they have zero, is what they're requesting for that side. And fifth waiver is to a, to allow a, a flat or more of a commercial look building rather than a sloped roof that the CBD design standards otherwise require. There are also two conditions, one, approval of the site lighting plan. As I mentioned last week, we, we have received that plan and have reviewed it, and it is in, it is in compliance. Two, compliance with all applicable city codes and ordinances. With that, Mr. Evans is here tonight, he does have some additional information to present, which is a follow-up to questions that were asked at last week's meeting, so...
Question to Mr. Benson before we go to the applicant. John, I've got, I've got one, I don't, I don't note, and I'm curious, has there, was there any consideration, and if it's on here, I'm sorry, was there any consideration for a privacy fence or any kind of physical screening of plants that are, we've done a good job of recommending the plants, but at the same time, these are only five-gallon plants, so it'll be a long time before they get to the proper height. Is there any consideration been given to a privacy fence along there that might actually keep trash from blowing, it might also, you know, it might be more appealing to the residents behind there?
Following last week's meeting, I did speak with Mr. Evans about that, and I'll let him respond to that further.
Okay, hopefully he has some good news on that for us. Okay, no other questions for Mr. Benson? Would the applicant like to make their presentation at this time, please? And we'll need your name and address again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. To recap introduction from last week, my name is Mark Evans, Development Coordinator for CCC Development Incorporated. CCC Development is a northeast Alabama real estate development company located at 200 Armory Road in center Alabama. I mentioned last time, CCC is a, is a small business consisting of approximately 16 home office employees, that nonetheless employs architects, engineers, contractors, both nationwide and local, from New Mexico, to Montana, to the Midwest, to the East Coast. A little about CCC. CCC Development's mission is to partner with Fortune 500 companies and expand their business footprint across the nation while simultaneously providing services, taxes, and employment opportunities to the public through this growth. This includes, but is not limited to, companies such as Family Dollar, Autozone, Tractor Supply Company, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Dollar General Stores, Subway, as well as several others. CCC's strategy consists of finding and securing property, developing designing plans, obtaining permits to construct business dreams into a reality. We are currently developing sites in Kansas, Missouri, Nebraska, Ohio, Alabama, Georgia, Texas, Oklahoma, New Mexico, and we are pursuing opportunities in several other states also. Our goal is to expand economic potential for each community and its citizens by providing development services consistent with our core values of hard work, honesty, and respect. In...
John, you got the advance, please. We're past that, too. There we go.
Recognizing that there are some, a lot of preconceptions, both in the real world and in the digital world, about what a dollar store really is, I'd like to share some facts and information about Family Dollar from Family Dollar. Family Dollar's mission is to be a compelling place to shop for our customers, compelling place to work for team members, compelling place to invest for shareholders. Family Dollar's vision is to be the best small format value and convenience retailer serving the needs of customers in the neighborhoods they serve. Family Dollar offers a mix of merchandise for family, from frozen refrigerated packaged foods to health and beauty aids, home decor, and seasonal merchandise. The stores sell popular name brands and quality private brands at prices typically lower than grocery, drug, and convenience stores. Family Dollar does not carry overruns or seconds. They have relationships with leading domestic suppliers, partners to carry out, carry their customers' favorite name brands in their stores. Family Dollar opened its first store in Charlotte, North Carolina, 1959. Today operates more than 8,200 stores in 46 states, with sales in excess of $10 billion. Family Dollar operates 118 stores in Missouri, with eight stores scheduled to open before then 2014. Family Dollar opened 500 new stores in 2013, along with its 11th distribution center in St. George, Utah. Family Dollar employs more than 55,000 team members at its stores, distribution centers, and store support center. Family Dollar store averages about 7,500 square feet, however, the, the newer stores, the freestanding stores typically range from 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. Family Dollar is a publicly held company listed on New York Stock Exchange under the symbol FDO. Family Dollar stores are located close to the families that benefit the most from their low prices and high quality. Family Dollar's core customer is typically female, head of household, skews older and makes about $40,000 annually, and their fastest growing customer segment makes in excess of $100,000 annually. Family Dollar supports nonprofits that seek to improve quality of life for their customers and team members. Family Dollar's Family Hope Community Foundation has given more than $2 million nationally since 2006. Community Foundation supports a variety of nonprofits and charitable causes, focuses primarily on partnering with nonprofits that support families in crisis through providing food, clothing, and shelter. Family Dollar is committed to ensuring a safe and secure shopping experience. Their field and store managers work closely with local law enforcement to monitor crime activity. Family Dollar adheres to risk classes established by the FBI and ensures that appropriate safety measures are in place, including some of the latest technology in in-store cameras, dial-in direct phone communications, and alarm systems. Now, can you see this? These are some selected locations that CCC either has recently completed or is currently actively developing across the country. From, see, New Mexico, Montana, quite a few around the Dallas-Fort Worth and East Texas area, as well as Midwest. On the next slide, we'll see...
There we go.
The Raytown area, here's, here's our Raytown location, we are currently either actively developing or under construction, and four other locations in the Kansas City metro area.
It's after nine o'clock, but no sleeping allowed with the lights out.
Okay, for the, the show and tell portion, your presentation. This is our, our proposed development, 9601 East 63rd Street, Raytown. Next slide, please. Our preliminary site plan. Don't recall the store being quite that skinny, but we, okay, we've got, we have our... Go back one slide, please. Okay. All right, we've got, let's, let's stop here, this shows our interests, this is, this is the computer model of our truck access, every, every site plan gets one of these. The site is actually modeled for the biggest semi-trailer in the book, Family Dollar's actual delivery truck is a bit smaller and more nimble than this, so this, this gives us conservative design. The truck is planned to enter from Evanston. This is our receiving area here, near the store. We'll proceed on out of the property back on to 63rd Street, and we'll enter the, we'll enter the middle lane, won't encroach on the oncoming lanes there. Of course, that provides the opportunity of traffic, of traffic, play in the center lane until it's clear and move on. With the next slide. I believe we have lost a bit of perspective on some of these photo attachments here. If I can get myself oriented here. Just, just briefly, this, this, this is a busted slide here. We, we have, are proposing to create a shared access easement with the adjoining property to the west of the Family Dollar site for future development. The grading on this property presented a, an extreme challenge for us, from the southwest corner to the northeast corner, we had grade differences in excess of 15 feet. Grading requirements being what they are for a retail store, including delivery area, which has to be fairly flat, and limitations on the slopes going in and out of the property, we were able to, we were able to bring the property up some, and we anticipate that if and when the site to the west is redeveloped, it will be able to come down some, meet our grade, and then we will have this, have a mutual access drive parallel to, to the street to better serve the traffic flow there. If there are any questions about the site plan, we also have civil drawings in separate files on the computer, some... If someone would like to have brought back up individually, we can, we can look at those. Apparently PowerPoint has dined on, on those. All right, we, we have, we do have a traffic projection for these stores. This is, this is straight from Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation 7th Edition testicle model, based on, based on the square footage of the store and the property use type being, being a freestanding discount store. Or, projects for an 8,233 square foot store, which this is, peak AM hourly trip generation, 44 trips busiest hour in the morning, estimated 45 trips busiest hour in the evening. So, that calculates to about one, one trip in and out of the facility every 80 seconds on average during the busiest hour of the week. Weekends slightly busier, a peak hour on Saturday, 63 trips, peak hour on Sunday, 61. So, for, for transportation facilities that front this property, that's, that's not a terrible challenge, it turns out. If we can make anything out of, out of the building layout on this slide here. No, apparently not. We'll just skip on past those. And again, we, we have these civil drawings in individual files if there are any questions. Now, this one, this one actually still is visible. We got, this is the, this is the proposed interior layout. This is designed by Family Dollar for the facility, not, not by CCC or our consulting. One thing in particular that's visible relating to what was discussed last week about windows, transparency, the location of products along the walls. These are, these are shelving units along the exterior walls of the sales floor area, also cooler and freezer units along this wall here. There's just, there's limited opportunity to place windows part of our building without displacing this merchandise, which is planned down to the square foot. Also, also bears noting, this is a sales support area where a lot of people call the stockroom. Not really much area back there, just enough area to get a shipment off the truck, racked up on the carts, and out on the sales floor as quickly as possible. Another consideration there is fire safety, no high pile storage is allowed back there. So, we, we have to get goods off the trucks, onto the sales floor, anywhere we can put them promptly, and all these shelving units along the walls help us meet that goal.
That's actually a reverse image of your proposed plan, right?
Let's see.
Because your, your entrance is on the northwest.
I think it may be, maybe turned upside down there, or, well, actually, I think it's squashed. I think it's distorted. This is, this on the actual plan is going to be the short side, this is going to be the long side. Yeah, thanks. I apologize, this, this, I promise, this looked, this looked perfectly normal on my screen when I developed it. At some, at some point through cyberspace, it didn't.
I feel for you.
We'll see. If we can move on ahead and see what the, okay, this looks almost normal. All right, this is, these are the color renderings of our exterior building elevations. See there, our corner entry here contains a significant portion of the glazing, and this is visible from both glazing and the corner entry is visible, both from the west elevation and the north elevation. Move to the next slide, I hope. These are our east and south elevations, even though there, we're not able to put windows there, you know, these, these walls conceal the sales support area, the office area, as well as the coolers and things like that. We, we do take advantage of this large canvas that we have, deploy numerous different colors and textures, provide some architectural interest here to keep it from looking like just a blank, you know, stark wall. Lot of vertical elements, lot of repetitive elements, is the actual, here. Parapet walls on all four sides to conceal the roof mounted equipment. I will, I have some, have some actual photos of a store similar to this also.
Say, say that again. So, the, the south, the south elevation, you do have the mechanical equipment on the roof screened by that, that facade up there?
This is, this is our fly, what we call flying parapet wall. It actually has about a one-foot gap here.
Okay.
It allows rainwater to drain into a gutter off of our standing seam roof.
So, you are screening those rooftop units, huh?
Yes, this, this, this allows us to have a four-sided closure on the roof while providing the drains to maintain our water tightness. All these, all of these roofs have minimum 25-year warranty on water tightness. That allows the water pass underneath without creating ice dams during the winter. Go to the next slide. Okay, there's a larger view of our, of our entrance in our basic colors. And the, the color elevations that we provided in our submittal have all these various, various We have our base brick, our, our accent brick, and also integrally colored split face block for the base sun. Altogether, seven different exterior materials to work with to provide some unique design elements to the sods of this building. Go to the next slide, please. The three different, three different colors of brick. We have drive it for some trims, minor elements, integrally colored block, the recognizable red canopies, dollars that we have, door and gutter trim, and doctor enclosure gates. We move on. It's my favorite part of the show here. This is, this is our new store, under construction presently, the corner of 81st and Leavenworth in Kansas City, Kansas. Obviously, it's not quite finished here. The block on this building, I believe, is actually spec, to be painted a uniform color, so you see it looks a little bit motley there, it's not painted yet. Likewise.
What did you say wasn't painted yet?
This split face block here.
I thought you said it was internally colored.
This, the Raytown store.
Okay.
Called for integrally.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Just, just wanted to point out the, the difference on, on this photo here, why it looks a little bit checkerboard. They're not particular about what it looks like before they paint it. This is, this been a work in progress. You can see the exposed metal layer that's going to get, drive it trim on this store is not yet finished. But this is what the, the basic brick scheme, the brick is essentially complete here, what our brick in Kansas City looks like. Not quite the same color palette, but it's a similar style. We're trying to be consistent around the Kansas City area with basic architectural style of our building. We, we, we started out with a suggestion from, from Kansas City, Kansas, a store built by another developer that they liked. And we based, we had our architect start from there, do his own design, and we are continuing with that, that overall style where we're able to around Kansas City. Go to the next slide, please. Another, another facade of that building there, and one more. Okay, here's the rear of the building. You can see there, the flying parapet up there at top is not, it's, doesn't have its finish yet. You see the, you see some daylight through there. It'll actually be a, actually be a gutter along the back edge to collect the water, the downspouts, bringing it down those pilasters there. Good, good view of, of that fourth parapet. And the next. Okay, this is, this is for demonstration. This is a, what we call a prototype store, recently completed new summer field, Texas. Split face, painted split face block on the front, prefinished metal panels.
The longer that's up there, the more we dislike it.
This is, this is for contrast. This is, this is an example of not urban design.
Okay, good.
Now, but just to point out before we move on, despite the fact that it's very plain compared to what the urban designs look like, this, this is from front to back and side to side, it's quality construction. Again, all the exterior finishes, 25 years or more warranty on the exterior finish, also on the weather tightness. These, these stores are, are built to last. We move on to the next one. Okay, recently completed store in Arlington, Texas. Probably recognize Arlington now, home of the Rangers and the Cowboys, and a kind of an up-and-coming suburb of Dallas-Fort Worth. And, and again, very, very particular and very proud of their urban design standards. We were able to work with them, faced some of the same challenges there that we face here in Raytown and other areas around Kansas City and Raytown, and, and were able to, to develop this store. We were pleased, Family Dollar was pleased, Arlington was pleased. And the next slide. This is Lancaster, Texas, is a corner entry store. We've done a few corner entries, they are, they're not as, they're not as common as the center doors. Again, urban design standards, enhanced landscape standards, basingry, no corrugated metal panels, and that's, that is typical of the corner entry stores that we develop in, in suburbia there. Next slide. Okay, now, this is the Taj Mahal here. Couple of years ago, Family Dollar experimented with some, some innovative designs, green design, designing for, for higher-income neighborhoods. They had envisioned developing dozens of these in the last couple of years, determined that the cost was just not, was just not economical. They only built three, CCC built two of those three. But they did learn a great deal from that experiment. Many of the, any of the lessons they learned, particularly in, in terms of energy efficiency, and some of the aesthetics are actually incorporated in the store that we're building now. We're, we're proud of this, but again, it's, that's a dollar and a quarter dollar store right there. You won't see many of those. But that's, that's not what somebody thinks of when they think of Family Dollar, obviously. So, there, there's a lot more to Family Dollar's building program than people think of when they think of the stereotypical 10-building. Next slide, firstly, the last slide. This is a real store. This store is, is, is actually under construction in Cloudcroft, Texas. The steel building structure is going up right now. It's, this is done in, in watercolor paints because the architect was so proud of it, he wanted it included in his, in his portfolio, his marketing portfolio. Cloudcroft is a, is a tourist town. Everything there is required to be designed on a Western Railroad motif, including Family Dollar stores. And I asked Mr. Larry Christian of Castle Design Group, can you build me Miss Kitty's Long Branch saloon from Gunsmoke? He said, sure. So, this, this building actually incorporates some prefabricated fiber cement nichihop panels, and it's surprisingly, for something that's, looks like it came off of, you know, out of Disney World somewhere, it's surprisingly economical, within, you know, within reason. We're looking forward to seeing this, this finish. So, Family Dollar stores can look like whatever the neighborhood and the market will support. And whatever is called for and whatever is, is needed to be, you know, a valued part of the community, we're willing and able to do. And that's, that's the last slide, if, if anybody had any questions about some of the stuff that you saw or didn't see, as I said, the civil drawings, we do have in electronic format and can put up here.
Perfect.
Where they're actually viewable.
Anything else you want to, to share in your presentation before we ask the board if they have questions for you, sir?
I don't, Fran, Cheryl, anything that I missed that you'd like to add?
Is there any allusion Mr. Benson gave me about the screening wall on the backside? Is there, is there any inclination you might have to put a screen wall on the south side of the property?
Okay, on, on the property, I'll go to my notes here. On our two sides of the property, we actually have, you know, some significant retaining walls, so we have some vertical relief there already. Now, in areas where safety requires it, there will be at least a safety rail or safety fence along, along those retaining walls, you know, often those are, for instance, chain link or black chain link or architectural-type fences, but we.
Were you back up to residential properties, sir, on the south side? Are you contemplating any sort of visual barrier, any screen wall visual barrier there?
We don't have any on our present plan along, along any of the property. Again, we, we've got significant walls along the south and west. They're not, you know, they're, they're not privacy walls or fences, they're just vertical relief in, in the terrain there. But again, we believe that, you know, we've, we've done a pretty good job of making this facility attractive from all sides without, without the need to provide a great deal of screen. The truck deliveries are typically for one of these stores about once a week and not during peak hours, because obviously these people unloading the trucks, so I can't do that if there are a lot of customers to serve, so.
You want to repeat what the gentleman just said?
We, we can, we can, if required, we can put up a screen wall along residential property. We've done that many times.
Okay. And are we talking about like a six-foot wall, wood, wood fence-type barrier?
Most often, it's a, it's a wood fence or a finished fence.
Mayor, if I could, just interject. On commercial projects for fencing, we usually, on other projects, what we've required for fencing is PVC, six-foot fence, but a PVC or vinyl fencing material.
Even better.
Because the wood we found fades over time and doesn't hold up as well as the PVC vinyl fencing.
And that would run completely along the south side of the property?
Let's see. I believe, I believe we've got room for that. Have to make sure that, make sure that we've got space behind the wall. So, obviously, it would have to serve as both a protective barrier for the wall as well as a fence.
Yeah.
But that's, because there's, we have a bit of slope there, we'll have to work that into the grading, but we can, we can provide a visual barrier. Of course, you know, what we have to keep in mind is, is that in, in some of these locations, we're actually going to be downhill from the edge of the property as well, so, you know, from off the property, you're looking, you know, kind of down at us. But again, we try to make, try to make the place attractive even if, even if there's no fence there.
Okay, you good? Okay, any questions of the applicant? We'll start on my left with Mr. Mock.
Okay, so you, you said, correct, you're okay with the PVC fence, correct?
Six-foot-high PVC fence.
Six-foot-high, property line to property line, okay. All right, now, there is a wood fence that it looks like goes across two of those, two of those lots behind where the residential is. I've got a question, how do you go about doing that? Well, I mean, were you putting offset into the fence itself? And my next question is, it looks like there's a chain link fence. I can't tell. John, can you tell if that's on that property? I can't tell, John, can you tell if that's on that property?
It'd be C2.
C dash two, second page.
Okay. That's on the set, sir, that you brought us last week. And for the board, it's in the packet.
That is correct, you are correct, Alderman Mock, there is on C2 along that property line, it shows a wood fence along the rear of Lot 16 and a chain link fence along the rear of Lot 17, which are the two properties to the south of the...
So he will be, he's able to work with that, okay?
Yeah, we'll need to work with it. There's also a four foot platted easement on their property along that, and we may not want that fence in that easement or in the middle of that easement. And we need to look at what utilities are there, it may need to be set in four or five feet.
I just want to make sure there's a visual barrier for the property owners on the south side looking to that commercial property.
Sure. Okay, next question is your delivery truck. You had mentioned it would be coming down Evanston, south into your back parking lot, and then back out onto 63rd Street?
That's the way it was modeled yesterday.
Beg your pardon?
That's the way the engineers modeled it, yes, coming approaching from the east, 63rd, south onto Evanston, and then westerly onto the property.
I ask, what size is your delivery truck? I mean, is it semi or...
What size, pardon me?
Is it semi?
A semi trailer, yes.
Well, but you used on your scale, I think, a 40 foot trailer. And what he said was more of a street truck, which I think is more of a 30 foot bed.
This is actually designed for a 75 foot long truck. Again, we kind of had some distortion with our images here. But that is a WB67 designed vehicle, which is an idealized vehicle, there aren't many trucks on the road that actually meet those dimensions.
Okay, with Evanston, John, being a 50 foot right away, I mean, would it be feasible, possibly, to put up no parking signs on the, would it be the west, excuse me, the east side of the building?
Yes, that's feasible. I'd have to check with our public works department and the ordinance to see what, if parking's allowed there or not. I don't believe there's on-street parking there currently because the existing property is developed with the driveway and parking lot right off that street now. So I don't think there's any on-street parking there.
I think you can park on-street there. That's okay, all right. Last question on, do you have your own trash trucks? Is that what I heard before, that you do have your own trash trucks?
Family Dollar contracts for that. They have a trash department. They have a dedicated department just to analyze and manage the trash collection from their store.
Okay.
So they're one of the many entities that has to sign off on the site plan before we prove the building.
So will your, the trucks come, be coming in off of 63rd Street then, or?
Yes, that's correct. They'd actually be, well, could approach from either direction. They could come from 63rd Street, pull to the east and back up to the containers, that will be one possibility. Another possibility, frankly, there's enough room for them to pull off of Evanston and then over into the parking area and then back up and back up to the, it depends on the size of the truck, really, back up to the containers, because that's quite a wide aisle there.
I know there's concern with the traffic on Evanston. I just wanted to make sure, see if we sort of maybe bring those trash trucks in off of 63rd Street instead of Evanston, take them off of Evanston. I think that's all the questions I have for right now.
Mr. Lightfoot.
We, you said that Family Dollar can look like anything the community wants it to look like. Then you showed us a wide array of pictures there of different styles. And this is going to be a quarter, corner entry store, right?
Yes, sir.
So one of your examples was Lancaster, Texas, a quarter entry store. And during planning and zoning and also during our previous board meeting, there was ample discussion with you about a window on what would be our east side of the building. And at both planning and zoning meetings, which I attended, and also the previous board meeting, you indicated it would be just nearly impossible to ever put a window on that side of the building of a quarter entry store, but Lancaster's got one.
Yes, that's right, there's, well, there's limited amount of glazing there.
Actually.
But this...
I may be seeing it wrong.
This store may actually be mirrored to what the Raytown store is.
Yeah, that illustration, I'm sorry.
The floor plans, the floor plan of any of these stores can pretty much mirror to the left or right.
Got the same windows in this particular location.
So it does, it does have.
Yeah.
Okay.
The sign is kind of hiding the other side there.
Stops.
Well, I know a lot of people who had asked that question, several aldermen and also several planning and zoning commissioners. So I, to me, it looked like that was, that would be our east side of the building, but I may be looking at a miriam, I guess.
Actually, that's the north, it'd be the north side in our case.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Van Busker.
How many emergency exit doors will there be from the building? Is there two, am I saying that correctly?
There is the main entrance, then there's also one sales area egress door. And on this particular store, it is on the west side near the rear, not far from the delivery door. The delivery door is not required by code to be an emergency exit, but if it's made accessible, meets ADA requirements, it can be an emergency exit, and oftentimes it is.
That's my question, will it be, will it be one or be able to be used as one?
With the, if it's necessary to put a ramp there, and if a ramp is there, it can be signed and designated as an emergency exit.
Okay, that's my next question, I guess. Now, that's on the south side, is that correct?
That is correct, the delivery door is on the south side.
Okay, and there will be some type of a dock or delivery ramp there?
Normally, either a stoop or just a raised area in the concrete.
Okay.
But not, typically not more than a few inches.
But it's not a large door, like a garage door or anything like that?
That is, I believe, a four foot steel door.
That's what?
I believe this is drawn in to be a four foot steel door.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Mr. Erz.
How many employees do you plan on, with this facility, typically hiring, and how many would work at any one time?
Full and part-time, they estimate around eight to 12. Not all, of course, working at the same time in the store.
Sure.
But full-time and part-time employees. And if you include fractional jobs created for other people servicing the store, you know, everybody from utility employees to vendors stocking facilities, maybe 12 to 18 full and part-time jobs, indirect impact.
Okay, and Family Dollar, I assume sells just a limited amount of perishable goods from what I saw in the pictures there?
The perishable goods would be limited to, I guess, the coolers and freezers, just along that one wall there that you can see on the plan there.
Okay, thank you.
The basics.
Mr. Azier.
The other aldermen have covered the nuts and bolts pretty well. I do have a couple of questions. I have to be honest, I'm not familiar with Family Dollar store. So are they competitive with like general dollar price-wise, otherwise lower prices, or are they more like a normal supermarket?
They're considered a deep discount, small box retailer. They're usually talked about in the same discussion with Dollar General, Dollar Tree, Fred's, many others.
And you were kind enough to take us on a driving tour of the United States to see all your architecture. Does that mean that we get to choose which style we like? Or how did you decide it? I'm just kind of curious what Raytown got.
Well, actually, we started with our first developments in the Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas City, Missouri metro area. Our first stores that actually went as far as construction and permitting were in Kansas City, Kansas. Kansas City provided us with a couple of photos of another developer's recently built store, and they said, you know, we like the way this store looks, and if you can design your store to be similar to this one, it would be received favorably. So we gave those photos to our architect, asked him, you know, can you kind of mimic this style with your design? Of course, he threw in a few of his own ideas. And we came up with a, we came up with a design that met all of the Kansas City, Kansas requirements and similar to, similar requirements that we encounter in the Midwest and in other urbanized areas. We liked the design well enough that we tried to stay in that same vein in this area so that our developments in different locations are similar.
Yeah, just from my opinion, I think it was really good you asked Kansas City, Kansas and Kansas City, but did you ask that question to our staff, what would we like to see?
We didn't actually ask them, they just told us.
I just think it's a fair question.
We, in effect, told them what we wanted by our design standards, specify the exterior materials. So they didn't, it wasn't necessarily a matter of discussion, it was just, here's our design standards, here's the type of materials that are acceptable, which is what they designed from those standards.
Well, my input would be, you know, when you see structures like Cloudcroft, New Mexico, maybe we're not asking good enough questions or giving a good enough design standards, because I saw a clear difference in some of those buildings than I'd rather see in our downtown Raytown. And I'm wondering why other cities get those and we don't. And if truly we're trying to upgrade Raytown, I think we should be going for broke, that's just kind of my feeling. So I don't think it's a bad deal, but I mean, you took the point to show all those pictures to us, and then I just kind of feel a little bit...
The operative word there is broke. We, of course, do have budget constraints, so we have to work within what Family Dollar's sales projections and what they're able to pay per square foot for rent will allow. Now, in these areas, we're already, we're already working within established design criteria. So the market is kind of set for us there in terms of real estate and what our competitors are having to do also. So we can't necessarily unilaterally decide to up the standards and the cost of per square foot of our building. But we, the point that I'm trying to make possibly a little bit clumsily is, we're able to work within, within the constraints and within the, within the competitive range pretty much anywhere we go.
I appreciate that. I would also say with the number of stores you're building and the profit you're making, I'm not sure that we could have done a little bit better.
Mr. Green, Mr. Jason Green. Thank you. Well, first, you know, I'm happy that you did show, you showed that one from like rural Texas, I think, the more outlet somewhat type looking, simple design, then you showed the one that mimics this design. And I was, personally, I was happy you showed that, I did, I liked that, you know, it doesn't fit, when I first heard about, obviously, you know, the planning and zoning, looking at the Family Dollar plan, site plan here, you had this image in your mind of what it looked like, like that, you know, that's what came to my mind first off, and I'm like, oh, you know, I don't want, that doesn't really gel with, you know, you know, an urban type feel. But the, for me personally, I think it's very appealing to the eye, the one you've presented, this one right here, I think it's very appealing. It's something that I would consider shopping at if I was driving by, you know, it looks inviting, it meets a lot of, you know, urban design standards, you know, but I say that because, you know, I think that's what we want to see in our downtown. So then again, I'm just speaking for myself, but I think it's very inviting, I would say it personally. I also want to make a comment real quick. I'm happy the mayor brought up the question about the fence or having a divider there. I think that's something I was really concerned with, with the residential property back there and the daycare property behind that. I was actually walking there earlier today, and yeah, part of that, that wooden fence there, and there's a chain link fence, and I think it could be cleaned up real nice there. There's, and obviously a lot of the vegetation and such, the trees and such, we discussed at the last meeting, that I'm happy you guys put in there. So I think coupled with, you know, the trees and the bushes and such, and with some kind of divider fence, if you will, six foot fence, that would alleviate a lot of my concerns with the south side. At any rate, I do have one question for you. You said trucks will come in for deliveries and such, and I don't know if you may not know this answer or not, but you said at non-optimal times, you know, when it's less busy. Please tell me that's not like 2:00 AM in the morning or something when...
I know, so that's typically going to be, typically going to be during business hours, but off-peak hours.
Okay, all righty. Well, thank you.
Mr. Kramer.
What do they anticipate the operating hours to be? What do they anticipate the operating hours to be for the store?
Frank, can you or Cheryl answer that? They vary from location and even, you know, from store to store within a city.
Answer is, repeat the answer, please.
Normally, at the outside bracket, 8:00 in the morning to 10:00 in the evening. And we do, we do see some in areas, established doors that don't stay open quite as long. Many, most of them though, from 8:00 to 10:00.
So the truck deliveries will be during those operating hours, but not during peak hours, from what I understand, correct?
Normally during the day. It's, you know, obviously for safety reasons, they want daylight when they're, because they don't have loading docks or anything, they bring these materials in on pallets and unload them at ground level. So that's a daytime operation for the truck.
Okay, and to go along with what Alderman Jason Green said, really, the design of it, it meets our guidelines, but also it meets the fit of our downtown in that we've got brick and mortar buildings down there, but it's just going to be the nicest brick and mortar building in downtown Raytown. And, you know, I look back, I think it's, somebody said, what, 40 years since a new building's been built in our downtown?
Yes.
Forty years, so...
Were you going to say that that might actually spur some other improvements to other neighboring buildings?
I'm thinking so. I'm thinking so. And maybe some of the neighbors around there will take a look at what Family Dollar's doing with their property, and it might spur them to do a little more with their property. So I appreciate your presentation.
Mr. Josh Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to confirm a few things that I want to make sure that you said. You said that you typically see a delivery or a shipment once a week, right?
That's normal. One of those trucks often can stock two or three stores in one trip from the distribution center. So that's, and of course, in busier stores or during busier times of the year, it could possibly be two trucks a week. But it is hard for this size store with that size staff to handle two shipments in a week. It would take, it would take probably the next two to three, at least two business days after a truck delivery, just to get everything back out on the shelves. So unless it's just flying off the shelf, one delivery is usually sufficient for, you know, an average, an average week.
Okay, also, I also want to echo some other comments, essentially. Firstly, I was actually going to bring up, if no one else did, the fencing on the south side, and I'm glad that a lot of other people brought that up, and it seems like there's some agreement on the board there. Also, I also would like to echo that I do like the design of it, that it actually is, it doesn't look like a dollar store, so to speak, or the preconceived notion of that. At this moment in time, I don't have anything else to say.
And we're going to go to one more, one more question before we go to public comment, Mr. Mock.
Just real quick, on the deliveries, I would like to see at least, you know, with rush hour traffic along 63rd Street, you know, any deliveries before 4:00 instead of 4:30, 5:00, 6:00, you know, if that could happen. I don't know if that could happen or not, you know. Without the big somebody's coming in at that time during rush hour, would not like to see that, you know, if that could be worked out somehow.
That is something that simply doesn't work well for the operation of the store. There's too much, too much traffic in and out of the store during peak hours. Store personnel are needed to wait on customers during those hours. These are the same folks that have to unload those trucks. So what you're, what you're going to see is the truck delivery is scheduled at times when you have labor available and not very many customers. labor available and not very many customers come in for an hour or two or three.
Well, and your drivers that are coming to that facility, you're going to learn how to get into that facility and when is best to arrive at that facility. So they're going to learn over time as a truck driver myself.
They tend to follow a routine, an established routine, kind of a route.
Okay.
Same guy usually.
Okay, very good. With that, sir, I'm going to go to public comment. I've got a number of people that have signed up for public comment, thank you. We'll probably bring you back up afterwards. First, and probably the most patient person in all the audience is Julie Wishy. Julie, would you like to come forward? Welcome, Julie Wishy from 6409 Elm.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. It's been a very interesting evening. I would have to say that I do feel a little bit better about this week from last week. Some of the situations that I brought up or had concerns about, I feel like are being addressed and taken care of for my neighborhood. I still am kind of in question about how the trucks are going to move in and out of there. And the reason I say that is because not only as a neighborhood person, but I also work for the school district. And we're going to have school buses going in and out of that street, too, and off of 63rd Street onto Evanston, taking kids back and forth to school. And that might, depending on when the trucks are moving in, that might cause an issue there, too. So again, I suppose the truck drivers will figure out when they should come around, when is the best time, when school's in session or when they're getting ready to get out of session. So anyway, I kind of agree with Jim. I think that the store that was chosen for us, I think, is a little bit nicer than some of the ones we saw on the screen. I would have liked to have the more cutesier one, of course, because we're, but anyway, just so you know where I come from, I moved to Raytown when I was nine years old, and 45 years later, here I am still. So that tells you how old I am. But I will also tell you that there's no more passionate person for this town than me. And I think that Raytown is the best kept secret. And I think that I'm willing, if you need me, I'm willing to be your number one promoter. So I offer that to you for future.
We have your number. Thanks, Julie. And the gentleman that brought Julie here some time ago, David, would you like to...
Mr. Mayor, Alderman. My thoughts, and I've heard a lot of discussion here tonight about different topics and different thoughts, and I would just like to bring a few thoughts that I have concerns about. I think some of them have been addressed, but I'm not sure all of them have. We live on 64th Terrace, and we're two blocks away from 63rd, and Evanston is one of our main entrances in and out of our neighborhood. And like they were saying, we're going to have trucks come in there, those semis coming in and coming around the back, coming out on 63rd. 63rd is a very, I don't care what anybody says, there's a lot of traffic. I heard tonight, there was 14,000 cars, if I remember what Mr. Cole said, coming down Raytown Trafficway daily. That's a lot of traffic. And to have that kind of traffic coming in and out of our street on Evanston, a lot of it will. And there's so many businesses already on Evanston, coming off of 63rd South. We have the motorcycle shop, we have a concrete business, we have an empty building there, we have a doctor's office, we have Durbin's Tree Service. On the other side, we have a daycare center, and these are very shortly after you come off of 63rd going south on Evanston. My feeling is, this is not a good location. I don't know if it's a done deal already. That's something that the board here will have to decide. Wherever, I'm going to propose another site for these fine folks, and we'll see how that shakes out. But this, to me, is not a good site for us. There's a lot of grading that's going to be done, they're going to have to do a lot of work there. And I don't know where this traffic study came from, but if the 14,000 cars a day is correct, that's good. I mean, that's a lot of traffic. Like I said, there's going to be a lot of site preparation, it appears, because the slopes down and up and down comes from the west to the east. The ingress, egress, in and out of there, it's just going to be out of sight. So my proposal would be, and this is to the fine folks at Family Dollar Management, is that I come to offer a site alternative for you, you folks. There's a, there's a former, and it's been closed, but it's a former site that they have a drive-through for the Bank of America on 63rd, off of 63rd, coming south on the trafficway, on the right-hand side. And to me, that would be an ideal spot, a site, for this Family Dollar. I think the grading and so forth would be very limited. It has a lot more room. It would not be backing up to our neighborhoods, which I don't think is a really good idea. And they have access, not only on the trafficway, they have access behind there, in front of Smith Brothers. Then they have another roadway coming up off of the other road, too, as well. So I think the access to that location would be much better served for the people of Raytown and for our neighborhood, because when you try to get in and out of our neighborhood coming down to Evanston and getting down to 63rd at night, I'd say from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., it's horrendous. That traffic is horrendous. And to, and it's too short a distance from Evanston to the trafficway, probably less than a half a block. So my concern is mainly the traffic, trying to get in and out of our neighborhoods. And I would like to think that the business opportunity is not the only concern here. Yes, do we need business in Raytown? Yeah. Would we like to have, but I'm offering an alternative. And I called the Bank of America today, I talked to their manager down there. He says the property is for sale. I don't know if all of you knew that that property was available and for sale, but it is. Great location, a lot of room. This proposed site here, not a lot of room, except for our neighborhoods. Crams up Evanston. They're going to bring in those big semis, come around the back, come on down to Evanston, which is crowded already. Like Julie said, you had buses coming up and down there, for now, in the school district. So that's my thoughts. I appreciate you listening to me. I don't know what you're going to decide, but whatever it is, it's not going to be another Ferguson. I'm not going to riot.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got Fran Blanchard also next. Fran, do you want to talk about, you do want to talk about this project, I know you do. Give us your address, please.
I live at 340 County Road 355 in Leesburg, Alabama. And I know this southern drawler is probably thinking that I'm from somewhere in New York or somewhere like that, but just to reiterate what Mark went over, and I understand the concerns of Ms. Julie, and I apologize, I didn't catch your last name, and I apologize for calling you Julie. But, guys, we're here for the community. The stores are fantastic. I live in a small town in Leesburg, Alabama, and our Dollar Stores are not just a part of the community, they're a part of us. And that's what these stores are built for, is for the community to be able to save money for time, for people just to be able to get in and out, where you don't shop big box constantly. It's, this store is, and I know that this didn't come out as well as Mark had wanted, but this is a beautiful store. Mr. Cole talked earlier about the development. This is almost a $2 million development that's going in. It's going to be a focal point for, when you put nails in something like this, you get other people excited. Ms. Julie talked about passion. I build all over the country. I love it. I love bringing stores to communities that need it. I do deal in small Oklahoma towns, I deal in Texas, and the biggest kick I get is from mayors. I had a mayor in Nebraska that drove a truck. He brought in over 150 loads of dirt for Backfield. This was the mayor, to make sure that the store come to the town. They're doing fantastic. You talk about passion. I'm going to bring up one of your local stars, Braylon Jackson from Raytown South, and my son are both in, playing baseball for the Tampa Bay Rays, and they're in High A, and their All-Star game was tonight. And when I found out that we had a little problem here, I wanted to come, and I just wanted to voice, rather than being in New York to see my son's first All-Star game in Braylon play, that this is very important, and you don't understand how important it is until the store's built, until you start shopping it. I mean, my wife and I were in Sunday, and you go in there for your cat food, your dog food, your paper towels, your, just your everyday needs. And the store is just going to represent Raytown. Raytown is a great place. We talk about the semis. You're not going to have semis up and down the road constantly, talking about once a week. All the engineering, all that goes into this, all the planning, the reason that we chose this place, and Mr. Boschum, and them going through and buying their property, and them being so great to us. Mr. Walker, fantastic. It's all a study. It's scientific. The store is put there because that's where it's going to flourish for the neighboring properties. So if you need a screening wall, I can do a screening wall. I'm going to get them out. We're not a big developer, but we know what communities like. I've done this for nine years, and I love to build. I love to see towns get bigger. I love for you to make money. We're not asking for any tax incentives, hadn't asked for one thing. Not a thing. We just want to be a good neighbor, we want to be a good store, we want to be economical, and we appreciate the opportunity, Mayor. Thank you, guys.
I'm out of dirt, I'm sorry.
Sir?
I'm out of dirt.
Do you have a dump truck?
I got a trailer.
Can you put up a screening wall?
Ask my wife, she'll say no.
Mine will, too. Thank you, guys.
All right. Anyone else in the audience that'd like to come forward and talk about this item at this time, this particular public hearing? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else in the audience. Once, two, three times, we're moving past public comments. Okay, back to John, anything you'd like to add?
A couple of things. On the table over here, I have some sample bricks that the developer has provided. This is the material that we put on the outside of the building. These are real bricks, they're not faux bricks or anything like that, so they're quality materials. In going back to Mr. Azier's comment, your concern for a quality-looking building, the pictures you saw, this building, in my opinion, this building will look better than any of the pictures you saw of their other stores. And I came to, it clicked in my head all of a sudden, I understand where you're coming from, and you're completely right. You haven't seen what our CBD design standards require. You said that this would be the first new building in downtown in 40 years. This will be the first new building under the CBD design standards that were adopted 10 years ago, or actually, 12 years ago. So to put that in context, that you haven't really seen what the CBD design standards require. So I think that when you see this project done, you'll see the effect of our CBD design standards. So when you go back to, did we ask, we didn't have to ask the CBD design standards, we already knew what we wanted, and we told them. They didn't even balk at any of our standards, other than the waivers, because of some grade issues and some site issues in that relation. So I hadn't thought about that, that this is actually the first new construction in the downtown under the CBD design standards. We've had some redevelopment projects, like the ladies' coffee, but nothing to this extent. So that's all I got, unless you have any questions.
Okay, any questions that, I'm going to go to board discussion at this time. Mr. Van Busker.
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, if you can haul it in your pickup, Mr. Ertz and I have quite a pile of dirt over in Ward 4 that we'd be willing to provide.
We can talk about that. We can sure talk about that. And I appreciate you staying on subject.
Yes.
Mr. Ertz.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Let me close the public hearing before we do that, please. I'm going to hereby close the public hearing, and I'll turn the floor, or the mic back over to Mr. Ertz, if you want to make a...
Okay, now I'll make a motion. A second.
Mr. Ertz has got the motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Kramer. Any further discussion on this item before we vote? Mr. Green, Mr. Josh Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that there was a lot of information presented today, and I actually, very recently, just kind of sat for an hour at that corner and examined traffic patterns during rush hour, and I've told a few of you that up here. And I had some concerns involving traffic, but knowing that there's only going to be one, I guess you could say semi-delivery per week, and seeing actually the, seeing how the store's going to look, and, you know, seeing what it looks like when we actually have something that's with our CBD standards, I can actually say that I'm quite comfortable supporting this.
Thank you. I'm going to chime in here real quick. I certainly feel for David's comments. I lived on that block, and part of the reason I'm concerned about what happens on the backside of that and the screening on that, but also, David, we don't have control over where they chosen this building. All we can deal with is this application that's in front of us on this site, so that's all we can deal with tonight. So I appreciate it, and we're going to probably ask Tom Cole to enlist your services for future developments, and you can't...
I have a question.
Well, I can't, really, because I got to bring you back up, and I've already closed the public hearing. So, but we feel for you, we're doing a good job.
I agree, to be good to be able to...
I feel for you. I can't call you back up, but I feel for you. Questions or comments? We're in, we've got a motion and a second, we're into discussion. Mr. Ertz?
My motion was to approve with the fencing that we talked about.
With the screen fencing on the backside.
Just so that was clear. I believe that was part of this, though.
All right, second accepts that. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ertz, or Mr. Azier, I'm sorry.
I do believe that that is a good site for any business, maybe not any business, but certainly it's a good business site, and I'm certainly glad to see a new building go up. And with the information given to us, there's a really even better site's going to be available for some other business, so maybe this is just the beginning. That's got to be exciting. So let's hear it for downtown Raytown.
Mr. Green.
I actually wanted to say, after my previous comment, that the other thing that I'm very, very happy to see is the fence, fencing in the south side, which is going to help with those neighborhoods, so...
Yeah, okay. Wow, a lot of good discussion. We're going to conclude discussion, we've got a motion and a second. I'll ask the city attorney to call the vote, please.
Alderman Ertz.
Yes.
Alderman Kramer.
Yes.
Alderman Mock.
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green.
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot.
Yes.
Alderman Nelson isn't with us. Alderman Jason Green.
Yes.
Mr. Alderman Van Busker.
Yes.
And Alderman Azier.
Yes.
Julie and David, thank you for your time and caring about the city and what's going on in your neighborhood. Family Dollar folks, thanks for your time, good presentation tonight, means a lot, so we welcome your business, further business, and we look forward to you prospering there. Thank you, sir. Good luck with the boys' game tonight, too, by the way.
It's a one-on-one tie.
All right, go get them. All right, ask the clerk, or excuse me, ask the city attorney to perform the second reading on Bill 6363... reading on Bill 6365, item eight on our agenda, please.
Second reading of Bill 636514, an ordinance approving the final plat of Family Dollar, a subdivision of the city of Raytown, Jackson County, Missouri.
Mr. Benson, anything to add to this, sir?
Um, this is the consolidation of the two lots into one lot, uh, for the Family Dollar store. Uh, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the final plats, uh, by a vote of seven in favor and zero against, uh, subject to, um, approval of the engineering plans for the applicable public improvements.
Does the board have any discussion or action they wish to take on item number eight? Mr. Kramer?
Before I make a motion to approve, I'd like to let everybody know the Royals are winning four to two right now, and I'll make that motion.
You mean the first-place Royals?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Van Busker, bring us back. I don't, did you actually make the motion? You actually did. Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Kramer, seconded by Mr. Van Busker, to approve item number eight, the second reading on that. Is there any further discussion on this item? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Green?
Yeah.
Josh Green, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Getting late, I apologize. Josh Green. Uh, Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Motion passes. On to item nine, which is second reading on Bill 6366, please.
Second reading of Bill 636614, an ordinance establishing a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials in the city of Raytown, Missouri. This is the one presented by Ms. Henry that is done every year here and is required by Missouri statute.
Any questions of our dearly beloved city attorney?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Kramer's got the motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Jason Green. Discussion? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
All right, item 10 is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for property located at 11900 East Highway 350. This is the first reading. I'll ask the city attorney to perform that first reading, please.
First reading of amended Bill 636714, section 13, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit, subject to certain conditions, to operate an auto-sales business on property located 11900 East Highway 350 in Raytown, Missouri.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on this ti- on this subject at this time, and ask if anyone wants to share any ex parte communication they may have had on this subject. Mr. Lightfoot?
I have had ex parte communication regarding this subject, but I will listen to all the facts and testimony before I make my decision.
Any other ex parte communications? All right, very good. Uh, Mr. Benson, would you like to introduce the application, please?
I would be happy to. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Alex Ekloggi and Mike Reza are seeking approval of this conditional use permit for a, uh, used auto dealership on property at 11900 East 350 Highway. Uh, the property is zoned planned industrial. The applicants are proposing to complete improvements that have not yet been completed, which were stipulated as conditions of approval of the previous zoning approvals on this property, which, uh, had been previously for a u- another auto dealership, as well as a auction business that had prior to that. Uh, the, the incomplete improvements include landscaping, as well as removal of the shoulder along eastbound and westbound Highway 350, and construction of curb and gutter along their frontages of both of those, uh, portions of Highway 350. As part of the application, the applicant has submitted the site development plan, uh, a copy of which he should have received, uh, which identifies the improvements that are be ma- to be made to the property. Um, the applicant has also submitted a traffic impact study for, for the proposed used car dealership business. Um, the applicant is requesting a suspension of the rules as he is purchasing the property with proceeds from the sale of other real estate he has owned, and he must close on the purchase of the subject property prior to the next Board of Alderun meeting on September 2nd, to avoid having to pay capital gains taxes. His purchase of the property is subject to approval of his conditional use permit application enabling him to operate the auto-sales business on this property. The Planning Commission has held a pu- a public hearing on this application as well, uh, by a vote of five in favor and one against, has recommended approval of the application subject to the following conditions. One, the conditional use permit shall be issued only to Mr. To the applicants, with the provision that the automotive sales business shall be owned and operated by them, and he shall be, and they shall be responsible for its actions. Two, the conditional use permit granted should not be transferable, and any change in ownership or control of the business shall require issuance of a new conditional use permit. Three, the existing shoulder shall be removed and curbing along the portion of the property abutting eastbound and westbound Highway 350 shall be constructed. Construction plans for these improvements must be submitted and approved by the city of Raytown and the Missouri Department of Transportation prior to construction. Four, landscaping shall be installed by August 31st, 2015, in accordance with the approved site plan and landscape plan that you have before you. Five, the conditional use permit shall not become valid, and vehicles shall not be displayed for sale or sold on the property until all site improvements required herein as a condition of approval have been completed and a use permit has been issued by the Development and Public Affairs Department. Due to inclement weather and seasonal challenges, in lieu of completion of the improvements prior to issuance of a use permit, the applicants or their assigned contractor may provide a performance guarantee to the city equal to the cost of the shoulder removal and construction of the curb and gutter. If that option for performance gu- performance guarantee is exercised, all site improvements must be completed prior to October 31st, uh, 2016. Apologize, that's a typo in your staff report, it should be 16. Number six, the conditional use permit shall expire 20 years from the issuance of the, of a use permit by the city, and that said use permit shall not be issued until all required improvements specified as condition of approval herein are completed or a performance guarantee, as I previously described, have been submitted to and accepted by the city of Raytown. Seven, compliance with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations. Eight, in compliance with, in compliance with the Raytown Code of Ordinances, no use permit or business license will be issued until all prior and outstanding city personal property tax, sales tax, sewer use charge, special assessment, merchant tax, real estate tax, or other tax fee or user charges paid in full. And nine, any inoperable, dismantled, or damaged vehicles shall be stored within the building so that it is not visible to persons outside of the building. That's all I have. The applicants are here tonight as well, if you have, um, which I believe they have some information to provide to you as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Weller, before we go further on that, uh, since the applicant has requested a suspension of the rules, when is the proper time to introduce that? Do we need to go through the, the normal protocol for the first reading? We have to, so we have to have a public hearing on the first reading and then come back and potentially do the entire process again?
Correct. After you've hadn't conducted your public hearing, then the first motion would need to be a motion to suspend the rules if you are so inclined, and if that is approved, then we could, can proceed with a second reading and a motion to approve tonight.
We don't have to go back through a second public hearing, can we? Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
And, and, Mr. Benson, before, I, would, does this mean in the proposed ordinance, paragraph number five, that the last date on that for Alderman approval is that the site improvements will be completed prior to October 31, 2016, in the proposed ordinance also?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Want to make that clarification for the-
Thank you, sir.
-board first I'd heard of that.
Any questions of, uh, Mr. Benson at this time? Mr. Lightfoot?
Well, since we're on that subject, I just wanted to touch on the request for suspension of the rules, because I've been through the planning and zoning process with these applicants, and we did try to hold a special meeting in planning and zoning, but we weren't able to obtain a quorum in order for them to be able to vet it through two Alderman meetings, but since we couldn't get the quorum, and planning and zoning was the Thursday before our last meeting, there wasn't enough public notice time for, to bring it the first time at that meeting, so they, they've really stated their case well of why they need to, um, request to suspend the rules, and it makes a lot of sense to me, so.
All right. Questions of Mr. Benson regarding the application? Mr. Van Busker?
Condition two, um, am I, is my mic on or off?
We can, we can hear.
Okay. My light's broken and I can't tell. Condition two, or, I take it back, it's condition one, says a conditional use permit shall be issued to only these two gentlemen, then it says with a provision that the automotive sales business shall be owned and operated by him, and he shall be responsible for its actions, so it, it seems to go from plural to singular there. What, what is that about?
That is my error in typing. That should be, that, them and they, instead of he, he, um, him and he. That's just a, it's a, a typo on my part.
I do have a couple of other questions, but I'll let, uh, let someone else go ahead first.
Questions of Mr. Benson before we bring the applicant forward. Uh, Mr. Mock, excuse me, sir.
And it says landscaping to be completed by August 31st, 2015. Why in August?
It was one year from the date of this application coming before you, and that was the date the Planning Commission set. Um, my, during the Planning Commission meeting, we talked that, um, for landscaping, it should either be, staff's recommendation would either be by May 31st, which is basically the end of the spring planting season, or by either October 31st or November 31st, which is the end of the fall planting season, to get out of the heat of the summer. Um, I, if I'm understanding more, thinking where you're going with that question, I agree that between June and August, there's not a good time to do plant- landscape planting.
Yeah, can we just move it to spring, then? Just to, you know?
Either move it up to May 31st or back to later in that fall. Either way, would defer to you.
Another thing is the islands. Now, have all the islands been completed, the parking lot islands, have they all been completed in there now?
I, I believe they have.
Okay. There's an issue there. There's no dirt in those islands, if I remember right.
That's correct. They still have to be, the interior part of the island, the soil ha- or they have to be prepared for plantings. That has not been done yet.
So, they'll make sure that's done?
Yes.
Or they put dirt in those before they open up? That's what I'm asking.
Um, I'll defer that question to the applicants to respond to. Um, one of the things on the pre- this goes back to the prior, um, applicant that was approved for auto sales, um, in relation to plantings in the island, it's not just a matter of putting dirt in those islands, it's tilling the soil underneath that in those islands, because that's been under pavement, it's compacted, and it needs to be loosened up, and then additional soil put on there so the roots can grow down. Otherwise, it's so compacted, the roots probably won't be able to grow through, and then the plantings would die.
I don't think there's anything there at all. I don't think they ever did.
Oh, you're right, there's nothing there now, but before they do the plantings, it's part of the preparation of doing the plantings that needs to be done within those islands.
Curbs were poured, but I don't think the dirt's been filled.
No. Yeah.
I may as well go over with my truck yet.
Alderman Mock, in, in response to your, uh, condition number four, is a, just a condition, so the Alderman can, in its discretion, move the date, I would suggest that you have the applicant ask them which way they're inclined to move the date, because then we review it either earlier toward the spring or later to the fall.
Okay, and if there's no other questions of Mr. Benson at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and ask the applicant if they'd like to come forward. Mr. Ekloggi, do you want to make a presentation, sir? Welcome, and thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Mayor, boards? That place is ruined. I'd like any of you, just go ahead, look at it. I don't want to even look at it, I don't want to go in. I have to go get it ready to get in. The planning, as John said, it should be done by next year, and the only re- reason I asked for curbing for two years, I am buying this property from my cash money, from IRS 2021 exchange board, I have from other property, I sold it. I'm a current five property. Bank do not or will not, per new regulation, give a loan to the vacant property. That's the only reason. If you place a bond for me, I can do it in next 90 days, but I cannot go spend million or million and a half on each property. I am not as big as Dollar General, and I don't have the stock market to sell it. I invest my own money, and I want to get a return, and I'm gonna go to the place where I'd like to. And I told, I said, two weeks ago, the reason I came to this place, only because of the history of that place, and because of, when I came to this country 25 years ago, I came here and lived in my brother's house on the 59th Street. I took him to the Oveland Park in Leewood, but we are coming back here. By the time I go there, I will redo the inside. Outside, I do the asphalt and planning. My planning for trees is different, maybe I plan look nicer, I can show it to you, my own cellphone. It would be roses, it would be flower. I want to open that place tomorrow, you're gonna come and shop in, and I'm gonna invite you, for all of you, to come for grand opening. I will have eight to 15 employee there. So, that is my plan for that place.
Does it, complete your presentation?
Pardon me?
Does that complete your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions of the applicant? Mr. Mock, do you want to phrase that question regarding the, uh-
Yeah, on the landscaping, I would like to see that we completed by-
October 15th.
May, you know, early, May 2015? I mean, that way we would see at least, or springtime, see it up, you know?
Sure.
Let's see. Um, the rea- the reason why we have parking lot, uh, itself, the islands itself, right now, like I said, it, right now, you get into there, uh, I think, putting dirt into those right now, because they are, if somebody got into it and tripped ass or anything like that, then, you know, you don't want to go through all that. That's why I'm saying, get those islands, go get them.
This, the island will fill, the asphalt will fix, I am not going there to operate, and I'm not gonna let my wife, as, or my children, to come and see me in that place. I'm gonna stay there first year. Any property I get it, I'm gonna stay in that property for first six months or year, make sure everything goes as smooth.
And so you're okay, you get those islands, parking lot islands, go get them.
Yeah. There is this, four or six of them, as you can see it, there is gonna be bushes, and fill out there with the dirt, mulch, or rocks. Yes, that, we will fill it out.
Refresh my memory on what you said regarding the date, please.
What date did you say on the line?
May?
2015?
May 1st, May 15th?
May 15th.
May 1st is the, is what, is what Steve has asked for. And, so when he makes, whoever makes the motion on this, if it's made tonight, we'll be adding that as a, as an amendment to that, so just-
That's fine.
You need to nod your head or something here if we know, okay.
So, May 15th, planning.
All right. All right. Let's continue. Questions of the applicant? Steve, you good? Mr. Ertz.
I don't know who the question goes to. As far as your timeline for moving into the property, I'm assuming if you're approved, you will, will you be starting very soon?
No.
No?
I have to do asphalt, inside, inside.
You'll be starting on your improvements fairly soon then.
Well, as soon as you get permit, I'm going to call for closing. If I don't close it in a second, I'm backing up of this contract because I end up paying about 400,000 taxes.
Sure.
And I would not stay, be honest.
I understand that part. That's totally separate from what I'm asking. I, I have no problem with that. We've had this property probably come to us three times, four times. It's my understanding that, that all the design standards that we've requested are being met on this, except for?
Except for the items that he's willing to complete.
Except for the items that he's willing to buy the bond or, or for a date certain of the 1st of May now.
Let me re, let me rephrase my answer.
Okay.
Not all the design standards on Highway 350 are being met because they're not, they're not all triggered.
Right.
But all the requirements that are previously, of the previous applications you mentioned, not all of those have been completed. He's willing, he has stated as part of this application, he will complete the rest of those.
We've had problems in the past because there's so much frontage on both highways on each side. This has been a very hard property, it seems to me, to move because of all the work that needs to be done and that's appreciated, that that would, that would be that way. Granted, I heard all the screenings and all this, we're not going to be storing salt and storing roomable equipment there. We're not going to be doing all kinds. The only business you're going to be running here is the car business.
It's a car business.
By the way, what's the name of it?
Automax KC.
Automax?
Yes. Automax KC. I will, going to compete with the CarMax.
Okay. Automax Raytown maybe. No, that's all right.
That's what I think, dude.
That's really all the questions I have for now. I think it's, um, good.
Mr. Azier.
Just a couple of questions. Are you going to be, I mean, originally that, that building has both mechanical and bodywork. Will be doing that kind of business too or just strictly selling used cars in auctions?
It will have the mechanical and bodywork at some point, but mechanical and rest of them when we started.
And, and John, I, I think you alluded this. I'm going to ask it clearly. So all of the original design standards that we asked for, the previous applicants are being met by this same gentleman or have been met?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? Mr. Bill. Mr. Bill. Mr. Van Busker. Oh, I, I'll try not to use that again. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Big Davey Daddy.
Sorry.
My question is about the 20-year, 20-year conditional use permit and why 20 years rather than 10 normally seems to be the standard?
Why not 30 years? I am going to invest $2 million. I want to get a return back in two, 20 years.
I, I guess my?
I mean, I guess my concern was, this is the only place, they gave me a limit on a year. I have building property in Kansas, Missouri, all over the town. This is the first time in last 22 years, the permit is for 10 years or 20 years. That was even a surprise.
Well, I, I guess my?
I just want to make sure I'm going to get a return in 20 years. I don't go to the places to stay there five years, like it, or six months or a year, like other residences that come and go.
Certainly, if, if everything was up to par in 10 years, I'm sure there would be no problem, you know, with a, with another conditional use permit. But that's, that's my question. I, I guess, John, I noticed in the, in the notes here somewhere that we do not have another 20-year conditional use permit. Is that correct?
Not, not specifically 20-year, at least, not that I can remember. The planning commission discussed it at the request of the applicant. There was an application, I recall, for a conditional use permit for a childcare center on Maple across from the Hy-Vee convenience store that we recently discussed. That had, that was approved with no limit on any years on that. That, ironically, that specific conditional use permit has now ceased because they never opened it at all. So in the, it's lapsed. But otherwise, it's been the board, at least going over for probably the past seven, eight years, maybe nine years, has always placed a time limit or preferred to place a time limit on conditional use permits as a rule of thumb. From that standpoint, staff had recommended 10 years, which is kind of a, a standard time period. That time period is based on, depending on the amount of investment the applicant is making on, in the property to allow them time to recoup their investment. In this case, as I recall from the discussion at the planning commission, 10 years was not necessarily long enough or the applicant didn't feel it was long enough to recoup their investment. He asked for 20 years. The planning commission discussed that and made, and changed staff's recommendation from 10 years to 20 years.
So staff recommendation is 20 years?
The staff's recommendation was for 10 years. The planning commission is recommending 20. As the, keep in mind also that it's tied to only the applicants. If they should not, no longer own or operate, this conditional use permit becomes null and void. If they close it, they can close it. But after six months, if they don't reopen it and they're the owner and operator, that conditional use permit goes away as well. So it is tied to them only in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mock.
Can I call you Alex?
Yes, sir.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Aklagi.
Okay. All right. Do you have any other car dealerships or used, used car dealerships here in town or?
My partner has unlimited auto sales since 1991, operating in Kansas City, Missouri.
And where is that located at?
Now is that 95th, Holmes and Bannister.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. I was just wondering why, because I was looking through here on the apartments that you sold, the apartments, this and that.
Well, basically, I own residential executive housing for high-dollar income people.
Okay.
And shopping center apartment, that's my specialty is real estate. If the real estate is worth it, I get it. That's how I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ertz.
For my curiosity, since this was Adam's Toyota for years, it was, been an auto dealer since, and why is there a, a time limit on, on this property? I can't remember it being anything besides this, so.
That, again, it's just been a, I guess.
That's just the way it's been, huh?
An unofficial policy, if you will, or unwritten policy on conditional use permits. That's totally up to the board. You as a board, if you don't feel the need for a time limit, you can remove that condition.
Or you can put it back to 10 if you want.
Or you can change it, yeah.
I'm fine with the 20, but I, I just, since it's tied to the, to him only and, and we'll have to stay open, that's fine.
All right. I'm going to get to a public comment here. Sir, thank you. Would anyone in the audience, actually, anyone in the audience like to come forward to talk about this item at this time? Once, twice? Bob, no. Three times? Okay, we're good. All right. Now with that, this would be an opportune time.
I think a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes.
Is that what you're looking for?
You're offering a motion to suspend.
I'm offering a motion to suspend the rules.
Seconded by his younger brother, Mr. Josh Green. Motion made by Mr. Jason Green, seconded by Mr. Josh Green for suspension of the rules. Let's deal with that motion. We've got a motion in a second for suspension of the rules, discussion on that motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Azier.
Would you clarify the reason for that? I mean, why, why is it pertinent that we have suspension in a 1-2 tonight?
Mr. Benson.
The applicant is using the money that he's from a previous real estate sale. He has a limited timeframe under IRS rules to reinvest that money. Otherwise, he pays capital gains taxes on that. And that money has to be reinvested prior to the board of al, next board of alderman meeting on September 2nd. Otherwise, he will pay for, I believe it was $400,000 in, in capital gains taxes. So by suspending the rules, it allows him to know if this is approved or not and he can go, move ahead to close on the property.
I'll just make a comment. I'm not arguing for or against that. I do remember at one time when I voted to suspend the rules, that was the sale of Cap Garden Park. And it was a fiasco afterwards. So I probably will vote against that just because we didn't give the public a chance to come back if they wanted to do that. So I won't support that for that reason. I'm not saying the rest of the board shouldn't, but.
I don't feel they're feeling any pressure. Mr. Green.
I'm going to be very brief about this. I think the reason why I think the applicant's in this situation is, is more of an issue with the planning and zoning failed to meet quorum. And so therefore, it kind of delayed the process. So therefore, I think the applicant was prepared, at least from my knowledge, from speaking or hearing Alderman Lightfoot's comments. But at any rate, I'll, I'll be voting in favor of suspending the rules.
Other discussion regarding suspension of the rules. Call a vote on suspension of the rules, please.
Alderman Jason Green.
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Michael Lightfoot.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Mock.
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Busker.
Yes.
Alderman Pat Ertz.
Yes.
Alderman Jim Azier.
No.
Alderman Joe Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Three force needed.
Then I think it's opportune then for you to then perform the second reading at this time, correct?
Yes, it is. Second reading of Bill 63, 67, 14, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit, subject to certain conditions, to operate an auto sales business on property located 11900 East Highway 350 in Raytown, Missouri.
All right, we're going to start back at the top on this. We have to go through the ex parte and all that good stuff again, just to be official or no?
No, you know.
And we, we don't have to go back through a public comment? We're back, we're back to board discussion then? That's where we take it back up, correct?
Motion to approve.
Board discussion?
Motion to approve.
You did.
When with the change of the date.
With the change of the date.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor to approve this. Change of the date's been seconded. You're okay with the second on the date? Okay. Motion's made in second, a motion made by Mr. Kramer, seconded by Mr. Azier.
Azier.
All right. Yes, Azier. Discussion before we vote. Got a motion in a second, further discussion, none appearing. Mr. Willers, please call the vote.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Alderman Kramer.
Yes.
Alderman Azier.
Yes.
Alderman Josh Green.
Yes.
Alderman Jason Green.
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker.
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot.
Yes.
Alderman Ertz.
Yes.
Alderman Mock.
Yes.
All right, I'll advise the board that we can now have, start the discussion item because we're still before 11 o'clock, which is a time that we would not be able to start any further discussion. So introduce the home buyers' education program. Discussion topics being brought forward by Alderman Joseph Kramer.
Okay, I'll make this as brief as I can. As many of you know, I've kind of banged the drum of rental property and the number of rental property in our community. And recently, I, I had conversation, Anthony and Lisa, if you want to come up to the mic up here. I had conversation with Anthony Carpino and then subsequently met with Lisa Saponaro and discussing the, the number of vacant properties in our community, the number of rental properties in our community. And I appreciate your patience. I had no idea this was going to take this long. But in the midst of the conversation that I had with Anthony and Lisa, I ran across somebody at my car dealership that had just put a for sale sign in their yard. And, and I asked the gentleman, I said, why did you put your house up for sale? And he said, because investor bought two properties on my street. And so what we have done through subsequent meetings is kind of worked together to devise a plan that is not friendly to the environment of investors, but of that person that wants to buy a house and reside in a community and kind of build that community. On top of what Tom Cole said, where these investor, or investors in business come in our community and they drive around and they look at the properties around and the vacant properties. I, I want to see people in these homes that want to reside here, that want to put their kids in school, that want to shop here. And so I'll just kind of turn it over to Lisa and Anthony and we'll let them get going since they've waited so long, so.
Good morning.
That's close. Bottom line is, instead of having investors come in, some of you have heard this before, instead of having investors come in by cheap homes, slap paint on it and rent it out cheaply, we want home buyers, we're young families. I believe this program will help younger people buy homes instead of coming in and renting. Sir, can you kind of give us some details of it? Details of the, the home buyer one-on-one? Yes. Basically, we bring in the renters, younger people, sit down with them, we explain to them how to fix their credit, how to do things right so they can buy a home. Sure, sure. So in, in regards to that, I mean, there's, there's no financial obligation on the city or anything like that. It's just a cooperative effort, right? Not at all.
Actually, what we're, what we're doing is, we want to educate people to want to live here, put down their roots here, since him and I both grew up here as well, and to maybe raise our family. For first-time home buyers and move-up buyers, just to educate them on what it takes to maybe, some of those renters are renting, to maybe get them into a home. It would be opened up to other communities as well because what we would like to do is have you guys perhaps back us to where we could have the meetings here and maybe advertise it in the paper, maybe once a month or once a quarter, and make it look like it's being promoted as you, Raytown, being behind, you know, their city, to, to educate people to get into the homes.
Now, now, Anthony, in, in our meetings, you talked about some, some programs where people could take a house that appraised at a certain amount. And can, can you kind of explain what you talked to us about in those meetings? 203K. It's federally backed, federally backed program where the house is in disrepair, been foreclosed on, sat around for 10, 15 years. You can go in, you can go in, actually escrow the repair money and then fix it up to what you want it to be. But, but do they do that based on future appraisal? Is that, is that how that works? Okay. It is done on a subject to. And? appraisal will come in and say this is what it appraises now and its condition. And subject to all of these improvements, this is what it can work then. And is there any restrictions as far as time to the home buyer that if they were to enter into a program like that, that they have to reside in the house for a certain period of time or? Actually, with the FHA program, most. Okay. Absolutely. Now, in, in the meetings that we had, and we discussed the number of vacant properties in, in the community or, or houses that had signs in front of them. How many, do you recall how many houses that was? That, wasn't it 159, I believe, listings that we showed for the Raytown area?
Um, I don't recall.
Now you're taking me back a couple of months. It's like 180. Okay. Thirty percent of those were being bought by investors as opposed to homeowners. Over time, that's huge. Yeah. And, and really, to my board, what we're looking at is cooperation, not to, to promote these homes to people that want to come here, young professionals that want to come and shop at Family Dollar or Smith Brother Hardware or wherever else and, and take part in their property. Of course, it's an educational program is all it is. It's nothing more than that. It doesn't require any city, city money. It's just a cooperative effort. So do you guys have anything you want to add on that, Anthony, or? Any questions?
Mr. Azier.
Just a couple. How, how long have you been involved in this program?
What program?
The one that you're, that you want to bring to City Hall?
I've, I've done first-time home buyer seminars since I got in business in, in 2001.
Okay, so about 14 years.
Program?
Yeah. So this is the first, this, you're launching a new program?
This would be a broader program.
Okay.
Which would give me a wider reach to young home buyers.
So it's, I'm just wanting to get, this is a same program, but expanded. Is that what you're saying? Or is it a new program? I, I'm not sure what you're bringing to us. You, first of all, you said you wanted to, is it a private enterprise? I mean, are you a corporation? I want to just know just a little bit about what we're talking about.
I'm a mortgage banker.
I'm a mortgage banker, leases a realtor.
Okay.
We've been involved in programs like this before.
I'm just trying to understand, because if you're asking to use City Hall, there's gotta be certain prerequisites, but I don't know if we've even done that before? That was a key question you needed to ask. If it was a business, for example, if you made a profit off of it, if, I mean, but these are all questions that I, I think are fair questions. And so I think we'd want to know those. Is that, would, Joe, don't you think that's a safe, to assume that we, if they were really asking to use City Hall?
Yeah, I would think if you were inclined to support this, or whatever, that you direct staff to look into this further and try to come back to you, learning from what they did, what they want to do, and whether it's just they were using the facility only, or they're asking for city endorsement of their program, and then the questions you're asking, what any of it is.
And this would be, this is the first, I've been on sixteen years, no one's ever come to do, do this, so I, I would know a little bit more. Secondly, is, so the people that you educate, do they have like a low-income requirement, like, though, these are really more astute young people that want to get into that?
Absolutely.
And I do see a cause for that. When I knocked on Ward one, I was surprised with how many young people, married couples who'd come from Kansas to buy homes in Raytown, because they could qualify for them, so...
So, Joe, if I missed it, I apologize, but what is it that you're asking of this board?
Well, I'm, I'm wanting the cooperation of the board, and, and in working with Lisa and Anthony. It's, it would involve city people like John Benson. When we went to John Benson about the program, and looking at doing a cooperative effort, it's, like I say, it requires no funding, or anything like that, there's no money that they're asking for from the city, or anything like that. But what I want to do is build a program that promotes filling these houses in Raytown, and, and through the programs that Anthony and Lisa and I have discussed, and, or, or wanting to launch. It's, it's just basically an effort to, to fill the existing vacant homes, or to ensure that we get good quality people into the, the homes that people reside in, but they have on the market.
But it would cost, it would cost staff's time, which is a cost to the taxpayers of the city.
Minimal amount of time, but when you look at filling vacant houses, and, and the benefit to filling vacant houses.
Okay. Mr. Ertz?
Thank you. I don't know if we're sure about what staff time that would be, but I went to the presentation that you gave, and I, I very much welcome anything that we, that would give us more homeowners in the homes, rather than especially out-of-state landlords, and, and the problem that we have with that. I know we, back to, and I believe also at this, this meeting we had before, all realtors would be invited to this, anybody that wanted to come to this is not niched into your two companies by any means at all. I believe this board-backed Community America Bank for Home Improvement Loans, so people could, could improve their properties. I believe we still have that program going, if I'm, yes, we do, okay? So it's not like we've never done a, tried to encourage our city to, to become a better city. We have looked to the private sector, and, and I appreciate you bringing it forward to us. I, I would like to know exactly what city...